Now, I don't know if they plan on making a presentation because there are modifications to Whitney. So maybe they plan on talking about it. He did say that the team was gonna be.
Okay, we're getting started. Okay, great. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. My name's Carrie Martinek, Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I have some announcements to read. Pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law in March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. This meeting will be conducted, this meeting of the planning board will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted. All members of the planning board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The act allows the planning boards to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northboard Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. I will now confirm the board members and persons anticipated on the agenda are remotely present and can be heard by stating the following. Members, when I call your name, please respond in affirmative, in affirmative. Bill Pierce?
Here.
Amy Pretzky?
Here.
Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
And Millie Milton?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Connors?
Here.
And Fred Litchfield.
Here.
Common ground rules for the meeting, for presenters and applicants listed on the agenda, the chair will invite each speaker or applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will provide full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meetings minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each floor taken by the Board of Committee will be conducted by roll call vote. For public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comments as follows. By phone dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized by the chair. Please note the party phone number will be visible to those who are in the meeting. By Zoom, click Raise Hand on the bottom of your screen and wait to be recognized by the chair. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, the chair will call on each by name and afford three minutes for comments. And with that, there is no executive session this evening, so we will get started with our agenda. The first item on our agenda is the continued public hearing for the property known as Zero and Three Oh One Barlet Street, Parcel H for Site Plan Approval and Groundwater Protection Ovaly District, Special Department, for the development of a distribution center and warehouse project. So let's bring that team in. Okay. Hi, Israel. It looks like you're the only one from the team here tonight. Is that true?
That is not true, actually. I just, I believe Mark Donahue and Scott Weiss are trying to get in.
Okay, are they having trouble? I don't see them.
Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. I just don't, I don't know if they're having any trouble or.
Yeah, they.
Mark Donahue just sent an email saying my Zoom link says still waiting to begin. So, Owen, I wonder if you can email the link to Mark Donahue?
Yep, I'll resend them the link.
Thank you.
Okay.
I used the link that came in through the tech support's email, not the one that's posted on the website. So maybe they were trying the one that was posted on the website.
Alright, so that hopefully is not a problem.
I re-invited Mark. Hopefully he can get the link.
Okay. Are we sure our posted link is working and whatnot? It just seems weird. There's usually, especially for this hearing, there's usually a longer list of attendees. It's fine, there may not, it may be the case, but it's just weird that your team can't log on and I just want to make sure it's not a problem.
Let's see.
You're right, there's nobody in the attendee list, really. I feel like it was a different password this time, was it?
Well, is our password usually different?
Oh yeah, that probably makes sense.
No, actually, it is the same password and my password worked, which is the same one.
Try to see if I can do it with my phone from the agenda.
I think I found out the issue. There, there you go. Now they're popping in. There we go.
Oh, okay. Did you, so was it just something on, alright, so it wasn't.
It was on my end.
Got it. Perfect. Okay, that's good to know. That's a relief. Okay, so I gotta bring some more people in here. Mark. And I don't know, there's Scott. Okay, so is that who you expected?
It's better.
Okay, so now that's everybody?
Everybody from our team.
Okay, great. Alright, so welcome back. I think we are just at a point where we're finalizing conditions and we've reviewed at length. The planner shared a version that the council from both sides were able to review together, and I think from there we had some additional edits that came from the plant, from, let's see, a planning board member. I don't know, we can maybe start with that, and then if any other members have additional comments, I only had a couple of comments. Let's see.
That was me. Do you want me to pull mine out?
Sure, that'd be great. That'd be a good start for us then. So, so Amy, then what you're pulling up is the version that was gone, that went through, Attorney Dineski went through, the applicant went through, and then it was what Lori sent, and now these are edits to that merged document.
That's what I'm hoping. It's on May, Mark, I mean, April fourteenth.
Okay.
So I, this is what I thought would be the final.
Okay, so that's right. The following wording has been agreed upon by town staff, town council, and applicant's attorney. So this must be the one. Lori, does this look like the right one to you, just to make sure we're all on the same, I know there are a lot of versions, so I just want to make sure we're at the absolute right one.
Yes, although Mark Donahue did send to me a couple of additional words that he wanted added to the conservation restriction condition. So when we get to that one, I will discuss it at that time.
Okay, great. Amy, do you want to walk through and then if you hit, did any other board members have comments or edits? I just want to make sure everyone, as we go through it, feel free to chime in. I know I'll keep an eye for my, the couple that I had.
Can I, can I just make an initial comment, Madam Chair?
Yeah, sure.
Thanks. I, I just want to put this in context. You know, we, we've spent a lot of time together getting to this point of these draft conditions, and the board is owed a lot of credit for all the effort it's put in listening, it's had of community members in that regard. There, there is embedded in here a lot of compromise by both sides on a lot of things, and you know, it's, if the board wishes to go through and, and keep looking at revisions, we will, you know, to your meeting, we'll do it any way you want, but at some point, there needs to be a recognition that this is a balancing to reach some level of consensus that frankly, I thought we had reached in the efforts that Ms. Connors, Mr. Dineski, and I had taken from all of the sessions we had with you, hearing the concerns and trying to come up with something that worked for everybody. So I just hope that people keep that in mind as we continue to go through and try to either wordsmith or add new concepts.
Great, appreciate the comment. I think it has been a, a good collaboration on both sides and from what I saw in the, the draft that had some suggestions, I don't, I don't think there's any material changes overall, so I, I, I hope we don't have any issues. I think it still reflects the intent of what we have been discussing all along. So if you don't want to go through them, I mean, at some point, we'll close the hearing and the board will vote with the conditions that we see fit. So I assume it would be to your advantage to at least go through that, but.
We're glad to participate in this meeting until we get to a set of conditions everybody can live with.
Okay, great. Alright, so Amy, you have some suggestions here.
Yeah, I felt mine were pretty minor, and the only ones that were major had to do with the new wording that came in between our meetings between the staff and Attorney Donahue and the applicant. So, these are just adding C reference sketch, because some of them had C reference sketch and others didn't. So this was pretty much just, it talked about the earthen slope, which is on the reference sketch, so I just used C adjusted trail grading. So it shows where it is, even though they're trying to describe where it is, the reference sketch shows where it is. So I was just following along with what they were doing in the other comments. I don't know if that's an issue.
No, if you're, if you're asking the, our opinions, change them A to E double I is no problem.
Okay. Then the other one was talking about the planting, so I was just saying they have to be maintained in perpetuity, just like the others that we have. I guess I can go through them and then you can say if you have an issue, but.
I'll stop you if you hit something that we have an issue.
Okay. And then, so for the next one, I was just trying to state the intent too. It said height of fourteen feet, and for a minimum total sound and light buffer of fourteen feet in height, so it's just pretty much the same thing. I think what you're doing is putting in, it says a sound dampening panel fence.
Well, I, I, I think height is an objective factor that somebody can determine. I'm not sure what's meant by total and sound light buffer. I'm not sure that's scientifically possible. So I would just as soon maintain that we can determine that the seven-foot-tall solid sound dampening panel fence on top of a seven-foot-tall landscape slope for a minimum height of fourteen feet meets the condition.
Amy, do you feel, was it something you felt strongly about otherwise? Do you think for, as long as they say fourteen feet and it's sound dampening, that that covers what you're trying to say here?
I'm trying to think. I was just making sure one of them is minimum height of fourteen. At one time, it was maximum, so I was just making sure. But, um, I mean, it was just trying to put the intent of what the fence is for, sound and light buffer, fifteen feet of, minimum fifteen, fourteen feet in height. So if you said for a minimum of fourteen feet in height for sound and light buffering? Yep, that would be fine, too.
Does that word, does the change in order make you feel better? Attorney Donahue?
Sure. If we're losing the concept of total sound and light buffer, that is, if, if the purpose is to, to describe why something is fourteen feet high, if that needs explanation, which I wonder if it does, then saying that that's the purpose of it, that it's to provide sound and light buffer is consistent with the intent of why it's being constructed.
I took up with total. Does that make a difference or do you want to switch the wording?
To, total changes everything. It suggests that it has to achieve some subjective standard. The condition is met by doing something objective. It's building this sound dampening fence on top of a particular berm. If, if for some reason the board feels it's important to say why that's being built there, we can come up with some language, but I would suggest to you, it's pretty clear when you build something like that along the perimeter of a property, that you're building it for the purposes of producing impacts of sound and light.
While we're on the subject, we did get an email today from Manny Loops, and I was wondering.
We didn't see it.
Yeah, he was just questioning. It just came in late, but I, 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 I just have a question concerning it for staff. If this sound and light buffer, say the sound, we're gonna do a sound study. If the sound is extreme compared to what we allow in our performance standards, then would a sound wall have to be, you know, made thicker or higher? What happens if the standards aren't met, the performance standards, even with this fourteen-foot-high fence? Because there is an initial sound analysis being done, and what if, you know, it says it won't go above ten dBs? What if it goes above? Then what happens? It's, it's more of a question for staff.
I'm looking for the conditions so I can read the wording, so just bear with me a minute.
Sure.
And we also had a number in there for, I forgot it was called, now I'm looking at it. So this was a comment from me about the, there was a measure for it that we were looking to achieve, it was like a ten something.
Decibel?
No, it was a.
Here's this, the base, here's the condition about baseline sound level.
You.
Yep.
Alright, I got it.
What Manny sent out in his email?
We do have a couple of conditions of approval regarding the. Let me see.
We have to hit the performance standards, which I mean, we had to do whether or not it was in our conditions. It says the applicant shall adhere to the environmental performance standards.
Yeah, so GG.
Okay.
Condition GG, the second part of the condition says that the operation, well, this has to do with the operation of equipment. Equipment shall be operated onsite in such a manner as to minimize the creation of excessive vibration, noise, noxious fumes, et cetera. Prior to the addition of generators, outdoor chillers, and other machinery or equipment, the applicant shall submit to the planning department an analysis from an acoustical consultant confirming that the operation of equipment shall not increase the broadband sound level of the property line by more than five dB A. So that's one limit. First, we already have the limitation on the hours.
I was just wondering if it goes above what is stated the sound levels should be. Then what happens? I guess then there's an enforcement, but according to our bylaws, actually, there's environmental performance standards. But any noise produced by a registered motor vehicle, provide that it's equipped with a noise suppression device, is does not apply. So I guess if the noise is coming from a car, which is what it would be coming from, or a truck, then it wouldn't apply. So.
Yeah, so G has to do with construction-related noise. Kind of have these conditions spread all over.
I know. That was just my concern. Right here, they're putting up a sound wall, and if it's not really doing anything, then what happens?
Yeah, yeah.
If it's not all enough, or if the noise is too loud? I guess it's something to think about, and I can keep going.
Well, no, because there's something else missing from here, too, and I can't tell with all the versions. It was, we put in something that quantified what the sound dampening would be, and it was related to a measurement. It was like a measurement of ten for something.
That was down the bottom.
Oh, we have that in there?
Just reading.
We think it was five. That has to do with the equipment.
Your tone.
Uh, no, it's not that. It was the sound dampening of the fence. It was the way they would be measured. The sound dampening would be measured by a.
I don't think we included language like that on the fence condition.
Um.
That must have gotten cut out or not included.
Yeah, I actually, I actually think that was in Manny's letter.
Yeah.
Not up for discussion, so.
No, no, we talked about it at the hearing. Sorry, just give me a minute.
Sure. I can mention the next one while she's looking it up.
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
And then we'll go back. But I wanted to know if the applicant had a size or if the town had a size of the evergreen screening trees, because it says depict an addition of minimum twenty evergreen screening trees, and, um, you know.
Typically, typically two and a half inch caliber, two to two and a half inch.
Okay, so can we add the size to the condition? Because right now it doesn't have any size.
Probably say two and a half.
Oops. Okay, so that's what that was. I, I noticed that was missing too, but it seemed like it was just a combination, so that, that satisfies the comment I had there for the trees.
I don't know if I need to put in parentheses. And then I talked about shall be maintained in perpetuity. I want to wait for you, Carrie, to find. I think I know what you're talking about, but I don't know where it was. Another one while she's looking that up is, um, this condition was in our previous conditions, but it disappeared. I don't know why. We never voted to take it out, and then they're shown on the sketch. The five trees to the east and the five to the west.
I took it out because it was on the sketch.
I was wondering if we should leave it in, because these are also on the sketch, the twenty.
If you want to leave it in, that's fine.
Yeah, just in case. You okay if I keep going, Carrie?
Well, sure, I've already had, yeah.
Sorry. Um. This was a question I had about the LSP. We talked about within the proposed limits of the disturbance of the project. So I'm assuming that the existence of TCE and CBOCs that they're looking for, um, the proposed limits of the disturbance of the project, is that just where the parking lot and the warehouse are?
Yeah, so, so the concern was that the construction itself will exacerbate any sort of pollution issue. So if they're not proposing construction, so this is a very large parcel of land, and the building envelope is really, really small. So, you know, it really doesn't make sense. I mean, if, if the area isn't going to be touched by the construction, then it doesn't make sense that they are testing for contamination that they have not caused. And it will not be exacerbated by the construction because it's, it's not located within the building envelope.
So Sandtech mentioned that it might be flowing into the wetlands on the east side, and that's like right along the aqueduct trail that people walk. I mean, will that be a hazard to people who might congregate over there or be walking or? My concern was if we're not gonna look at it in the area that Sandtech mentioned it might be, did the Board of Health weigh in, and can we get a letter from Town Council that, you know, as a planning board, we can't make them test for contamination that our technical experts said could or may or may not be there. I don't know, I just want to take it off of our hands and have our town council or the Board of Health, because he had mentioned before that would follow under their purview.
But if it isn't within the buil- building envelope, how can the construction cause an exacerbation of the issue?
Yeah, I'm not worried about.
There, there's a huge amount of land, so it's a sixty-acre parcel, and a huge amount of that is permanently protected open space that isn't going to be impacted by any sort of development. So the, the contamination has not been caused by the applicant. So they, they are under no obligation to clean up the contamination. And there's nothing to say that the wetlands are contaminated. So it's kind of like a shot in the dark or a needle in the haystack. You know?
We'll just get a letter from Town Council saying that.
But I think he's here, isn't he?
Yeah. But I just would want it in writing added to our decision that, I don't know, that the planning board, it's not in their purview to test for TCE and CBOCs without outside of the proposed limits of disturbance of the project.
I can't speak to that, Madam Chair. I, I think the issue here is that as was described, the area of disturbance is limited, and there would not be any obligation for a testing with respect to a condition that exists on another property. So I think that's the way to directly address it. If there's not going to be any activity on the property in the area where conceivably something from an off-site location could go, there would not be activity that would, as was stated, exacerbate. Now, we do have the requirement that there's going to be this LSP analysis. And that will relate to the limits of disturbance, and I think that's the area of concern. What will be disturbed by the applicant or any applicant on a site, and what would be the consequences of that disturbance?
So this.
This, this will not change. If, if there is something emanating or being released from another property that that owner or other parties who may be responsible for it will still be responsible regardless of what might be contained in any conditions that the board would adopt for the subject property.
What if it leaches out to the subject property, then who cleans that up? So say the wetlands where the vernal pools are over on the east have all this TCE and CBOCs in it. Who cleans it up if it's on their site? If it's on this site, but it's not, you know, they're not contaminating it, but it leached over? Does it just sit there, or does someone, is someone responsible for cleaning it up?
If someone, in, in general, if someone is responsible for a release that causes harm or injury, then that property owner or person would be a responsible party, which is the term under chapter twenty-one E of the general laws. So that owner responsible party would be subject to enforcement and orders by the DEP and could also conceivably as a private matter be subject to a claim by owners of any property that is affected by the release.
Okay. Can we add it as one of our finding of facts that that we can only check within the proposed limits of disturbance of the project? I guess it just bothers me that. that we can only check within the proposed limits of disturbance of the project? I guess it just bothers me that I know it's possibly there, but we're being told we can't check it. And it's on the groundwater zone in our town.
I think the, the way to express it is that where an application is not proposing to disturb an area that is potentially an area of contamination or other undesirable material, testing with respect to that material would not be an obligation that the application would implicate or create because the work, the disturbance is not going to occur at the area in question. We can certainly craft some language that identifies the issues that we've talked about in the general rules of responsibility and the establishment of a responsible party under the regulatory scheme. That will take a little, take a little more worth than, than our discussion tonight, but that language could be created.
I just want something in there that says the Board of Health is okay, or you're okay, or it's beyond our purview to check outside of the proposed limits of disturbance.
Okay, so is that something the board would like to add?
I'm a little confused if I can, Madam Chair, as to where this goes as a condition of approval that establishes how an applicant has to proceed. I mean, this, the condition presently instructs the applicant what to what its obligations are. I'm not sure where this is going about adding language about the Board of Health.
Would that be better finding of fact?
Right.
Maybe that's just a finding of fact. It's not within the planning board's purview to, like, we investigated, we looked at the report. I think we're just looking to make sure that um, it's somewhere documented that it's, it wasn't within our purview to look at. So maybe that, Dr. Terry Janeski, does that sound like it could be in a finding of fact and findings of fact instead?
Yes, and I think that was what was suggested, that the subject be identified in the findings as opposed to a condition, because I don't think that what we have been discussing lends itself to a condition.
Okay. Amy, does that sound okay with you?
Yep.
I did find what I was looking for and we talked about um, a STC rating. So it was a sound transmission class rating, and we talked about what that would be given, what kind of rating we would look at for that. So that was in the last hearing. I actually happened to find it in the hearing itself, so um, we did discuss that openly. I think, I don't know, I, I think we were editing on the fly and I thought we put something in there. Trying to word that and then it just never got reflected in this edit. So I want to make sure that we have some sort of what we, what we were trying to strive for last time is some sort of measurement of how we would know that it actually was. Anything could be sound dampening. So again, like, how do you quantify it? Not just make it a subjective thing. Um, I don't know if we necessarily agreed on what that number is. It looks like it's a scale of twenty-five to sixty-five. I don't know, I don't think any experts are here to weigh in on that.
Well, I, I, I think, I mean, we talked about a lot of things and, and I think that I thought when we had got to a consensus on, because I'm not sure that we're prepared to talk about specific STC standards. Is the fence itself is going to be seven feet tall. It's gonna be tall, it's gonna be solid. It's going to be a sound dampening panel fence. It was talked specifically, I recall, of it not being chain linked with slats in it and that type of thing. And it, it created therefore that realm of what it's going to be. You know, it you know, that's, that's the standard for generally selecting fencing along the perimeter. This is even on the perimeter of the site, it's on the perimeter of parking.
Okay, is the board okay with not including some sort of number or?
I think it just has to, once we do the sound test, it's got to meet those, those parameters.
Okay.
And, and whatever that number is, we, we've, we've got to work with that rather than have a specific number that we don't know how to apply yet.
Okay, so Lori, then going back, and I'm sorry, you probably solved this and I was looking up this other thing. Um, we decided that because we have the ten DBs in there, which I think we put five, but our bylaws have ten, um, that will, if there is a problem with this fence, it, it will be addressed. It needs to reach that ten decibel. We need to do the baseline measurement pre and then post, we do, we just, we figure out if there's a complaint or something, whatever, whatever the case, we still have to make sure it doesn't, it's not greater than ten decibels, correct?
Okay.
Oh, Fred, you have something there? Oops, can't hear there, Fred.
I do. Um, I can't find the exact wording on the ten decibels. I know that it was in there. My understanding is that in previous uh, industrial developments, and it's only in industrial districts, the building inspector requires a noise study prior to operation of the building to see what the ambient level is. And then afterwards, if there's a complaint, they do another noise study. If it's more than the ten decibels uh, of an increase, the applicant is required to make adjustments to get it under that limit. And it's, and it's not with construction, but it's, it's more like things um, the one issue that we had a number of years ago, I remember, was some air conditioning units on top of a building. There was a residential property nearby that complained about the noise level. Building inspector had a study done and they provided some insulation to muffle that noise to below the level that was required, but it was done in conjunction between the developer, who had put up the building and the building inspector, and it didn't go back to the board. It was something that he worked on. That's the way I recall it being done.
Okay, so and why do we have five in here? Isn't it ten in our bylaws?
No, it's five.
So we had talked about it at the last time, being ten DBA. And you folks thought that that was be too high, so you asked for it to be reduced to five.
The board asked for that?
Yeah, that was at the last meeting.
Page seven forty-nine, I think it's what our bylaws say. I think that's why it was put in there. I think the state actually says ten and our bylaws say five.
I thought it was five. I, I don't call the ten.
Seven forty-nine.
Oh, it is, okay. It is, you're right.
But the only thing is, Gigi, it's talking about HVAC equipment and chillers and stuff.
You're right, I'm going the wrong way. You guys are absolutely right. Sorry about that.
But this condition has to do with HVAC chillers and stuff. The sound of trucks or cars and that doesn't count because according to our environmental performance standards, those aren't included.
Well, the construction's not included, right?
If you go to page seven forty-nine.
Okay, so right, so, but, so that's just during construction where they don't apply, but otherwise, everything applies. Anything due to operations of facility. Okay.
I'm not sure.
Well, no, on seven forty-nine, it says, with respect to industrial uses having an impact on residential, residential uses, the sound due to the operations of the facility um, shall not be increased over the ambient sound level by more than five decibels.
Right, but if you go on the next page, it says this subsection shall not apply to the following activities.
Oh, right. So motor vehicles, so a registered motor vehicle um, is a, so that would be trucks, cars, et cetera?
Mm-hmm, I think.
Okay.
So that's why I was thinking of the question, when we talk about the sound well. So I guess the sound study that's done is really only for like if there are chillers or HVAC in, in other noises on the site.
Yeah. Okay, so then that gets back to Millie, then what you said really doesn't apply with, we'd have to put in the condition with the fence that should it, should the noise level not meet, you know, should the ambient noise be greater than five decibels or whatever the case, whatever we put in there um, and make it part of that condition. If we're not gonna, if we're, you know, obviously, we don't want to put in a stat we're not familiar with like STC, but there's no sound dampening is a little too subjective, I think, in this case.
If, if I can, I, I, I think we're talking about a bunch of different things now all, altogether and that's making it more difficult. If a piece of equipment which operates on a regular basis is the reason why the increase occurs, there are a number of ways, as Mr. Litchfield has already indicated, that an owner of a site can try to mitigate that. Above and beyond any fencing, there is, as he indicated, insulation around the machinery. There's screening that could be done. It can be a change of machinery, it can be change of location, can be a lot of those type of things. Both your bylaw and in fact, the state regulations, DEP, of which your bylaw is based on with regard to sound, exclude things such as motor vehicle activities from any measurement. Uh, that does not trigger anything here, and that would not be something that would trigger um, in here, an appropriate condition. It is the regular operation of equipment above and beyond um, that which it has to be measured ahead of time and demonstrated it's going to be a compliance before it goes in and if there's a complaint, then there's a process that's already in place without conditions of approval under your bylaw um, that would work for enforcement, because Mr. Litchfield's indicated it's happened before, it'll happen again.
That's why I was wondering if we actually do need the STC, if that is what.
It has nothing to do with the fence. There's, there's, there's other ways to solve it other than the type of fence that gets resolved. STC usually isn't a fence, first of all. It's usually a wall measure. Um, it's, 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 STC is a measurement that's generally used along state highways or interstate highways. You know, it, it has very little relevance to, next to a hundred and twenty car parking area.
I mean, that's not even what, we did not bring that up as a measurement. That was brought up by you guys in this hearing, so.
But what we offered is what's in there, Madam Chair, is a solid sound dampening fence.
Okay, so board thoughts on that? Is that adequate?
What did you hear when you listened to that? You were just listening to the STC.
Um, it was changing the words around to reflect sound dampening and that Scott Weiss had talked to one of the guys, the construction crew guys or whatever the case, and they had said that what you really wanted to get to is the STC rating, which, whatever that number is, uh, we never settled on, but that it would be based on the STC rating. That was actually be the quantifier for the sound, for what that sound dampening would equate to. So that's what you guys brought forward. We, it wasn't brought upon by us. Um, I don't know how else to quantify this. I don't think there are instances where, that I recall enforce, I, I don't know, does anybody on the board recall any sort of conditions that allowed for enforcement of this or has it ever been enforced? I don't know.
No, because I don't, I think this is the first of its kind next door to a residential neighborhood. Like, this is the closest warehouse to a resident, except for one lineman, and they only had one truck bay and they said there were only nine to five. So I guess maybe if we get to the bottom, the HH in our hours of operation are lower, then it won't make as big of a difference.
Okay, so let's, why don't we carry on? We won't get stuck on it. Bookmark it, but let's carry on so we can get through this.
Okay. So we talked about the LSP already. Um, the only change I had for half hours of operation related to construction of the project, and it says site work only. I was crossing that out because site work is actually on the ground, the trees and the dirt. But I don't think they should be building the building on a Sunday or a holiday either. So I just crossed out site work only and no exterior work shall take place on Sundays or legal holidays. It's actually different than what we have in our bylaws. Our bylaws actually talks about construction. It didn't say site work only.
So, uh, the reason why I put that language in is because they may want to build out the interior of the building. So nobody's going to hear anything. It's going to be all interior work. Um, so it's not going to be, you know, any sort of uh, impact to the butters. So that's why I put, it's, this is a standard condition that I put in several of the decisions. So if they want to, if they want to paint the interior, if they want to put up drywall, if they want to, you know, do plumbing work or electrical work inside the building, then this would not limit that.
That's why I just crossed out saying, wrote, no exterior work. So they can be inside doing work, but you don't want to be building the building and doing all the outside work. It's only Sunday and legal holidays. The workers probably want a day off anyways.
But I read the hours of operation related to construction of the project shall be limited to seven AM to seven PM. That tells me no matter what, you can't do anything between those hours. So interior, you should be able to.
Yeah, that's why I put site work only. So site work only is the exterior work.
Right.
So anything that's interior would not be captured by the the parentheses of site work only.
Right, I agree with that.
So where it says site work only limited to seven AM to seven PM, that means after eight o'clock, you can still be working on the building outside?
Inside.
Inside.
Inside, I know.
If they want to work all night on the plumbing, it's not going to be, uh, you know, any sort of impact to the neighborhood, so they would be able to do that.
Right, but I do think it has to say no exterior work. Because it doesn't, if you say, or you can say interior work only, like this just says no exterior work shall take place on Sundays and legal holidays, so that means anything interior still could happen.
Right, but the, when you cross out the site work only.
The first one.
When you cross that out, that sort of took the whole thing out.
What about?
I think the standard language that, uh, you know, folks in the construction business use is site work, so I, I think that that is more in keeping with what the developers are used to seeing. Because I think that there are going to be more questions as to, well, what do you mean by exterior work?
Right.
I don't know why. We should just keep it with what we have in our bylaws.
And what is the language in the bylaws? What page you on?
Let me see, I put it over here. I have to see it. Seven twelve. Talks about construction equipment may be operated by a paid contractor between the hours of seven AM and seven PM daily.
You're on that page seven twelve, you said?
Yeah. The top of the page.
Okay.
Well, that is less limiting than what I put.
Right. That says construction equipment only.
I just want to make sure, whatever it says, there's no exterior work happening on the weekends if, you know, if they've only have two days without the work going on.
So Lori, you're saying site work means inside only.
So what I'm saying is the, the site, the site work is the exterior work. So that's grading, that's um, you know, landscaping, that's uh, construction of the driveway, that's you, you know, it's the, the use of equipment to do exterior work. Um, even that would be putting, um, if there were asphalt roof shingles, and I'm sure there aren't, but that would be installation of the roof, so hammering. So any sort of work that is exterior to the building, site work, construction-related site work would be captured. So, letter E just talks about construction equipment, which is fine. So that means they would. So that means they would be able to do site work, like landscaping, you know, that's silent. Um, outside of those hours that are specified. So if you folks are fine with them doing. Exterior work that doesn't involve construction equipment, then I'm fine with that. Um, but it, it does mean that they'd be able to do more than what this, this condition says.
They'd be able to operate chainsaws.
I know, but I guess I'm trying to, I guess I don't get it. Well, this says no exterior work shall be take place on Sundays and legal holidays.
Well, that's your language.
Right.
I said no site work.
Right.
Shall take place on Sundays and legal Saturdays, legal holidays.
But that means they could be hammering shingles or. Doing other exterior work other than site work.
It sounds like Lori's saying that is site work.
Site work is, has to do with just the grading.
Not, not, not in the business, it, it doesn't. It, it has to do with everything that's outside, but, uh, you know. Perhaps, perhaps the, the parenthetical in the first sentence you struck of site work only. If you made that, I think what you're getting to is exterior only, is limited to seven A M and seven P M. Then, that, that's fine. You know, the, the desire to be able to particularly try and meet a deadline. Of being able to work inside a facility to finish it, is what we want to preserve. I think it's common practice. Um, in, uh, just industrial buildings, but commercial buildings, to do that kind of work off hours. Um, happens on a fairly regular basis.
I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, that it's not. Sure, the site work can't happen during those hours, but we can hammer the building, and I know it's. Concrete, so they're not gonna be hammering, but whatever they're doing, jackhammering.
Okay, so does this satisfy? Any thoughts otherwise?
Yeah, even exterior. Just saying that the exterior work shall be limited.
Okay.
But interior work, we don't care about, at least I don't.
Does anybody, uh, nobody, I don't think anybody does. Okay. Does anybody care about interior work? No, nobody does. Okay.
Or could say hours of operation related to the exterior construction of the project.
I think it's cleaner the way you have it.
Okay.
I don't know, does anyone feel differently? Okay. All right.
I don't know if anyone else had any other changes. To any of these?
Any board members?
No.
This had to do with the color, and this was more to help the applicant, because on the sketch, they had pointed to the sides that they were gonna paint. Um, that color, so like the conditions above, we just, I just wrote depicted on the plan sheet labeled reference sketch. So the reference sketch actually points to the actual sides that are gonna be painted. Just so there's no questions after the fact, when someone says, well, that's, you know, I don't know, that's not what we meant. If you look at the sketch, it actually points it out.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone has any.
I, oh, I have something on cue. So, uh, this was changed for re, it's changed from. For review and comments. It was review and approval, and I'm just wondering, um, the thought process behind that. Why not approval? Is that something which just didn't make sense, or a reason why that was changed?
Uh, that was a, a comment from the applicant. And I was okay with it because, uh, honestly, the freestanding sign permit is issued by the. Uh, building inspector, so he's actually the approval authority.
Okay.
So, uh, I thought it was okay that they changed the language to comments.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense. I just wasn't sure what that was behind that. Any comments on that from the board?
I think that's good.
Um, prior to the issuance of circuit certificate of occupancy, I just wanted to add this one sign, if it wasn't a big deal. Install clearly visible signage in the truck lot stating that there's no idling over five minutes. I know it's a state law, but I don't know how many people know it, like. If all the truck drivers are trained that they can't idle for more than five minutes, I think it was Millie's idea before, but I think it's a great idea because. I saw it first in the parking lot, and I never knew it was a state law. I don't know how, so I thought it didn't hurt to have a sign in the truck lot stating there's no idling for over five minutes.
Any issue with this one?
Um, this went down to the, um, bypass trail. This was worked out in between meetings, and there were a lot of changes made. Um, the only concern I had with it was, um. I thought the way we had discussed it was the applicant was gonna construct the bypass trail. If they just give the easement. Then the town will have to construct it, and I think it's pretty much just clearing six feet of trees. Which would be easier while they have all their equipment in. If the town has to do it, we're gonna have to get money from the C B C, or. It's gonna be a long process, and it, it will have to pay prevailing wages, which will be like three times the amount. Then if while the applicant was there, they could just clear the six foot wide bypass trail. It doesn't have to be. You know, paved, it doesn't have to be anything fancy. It's just pretty much clearing a trail so the people can walk. So that was the only. Real change.
Thoughts on this one?
Yep, can you see, I just, so what I did, and Attorney Dinesky would probably have to review it, is. Um, it was saying that they were gonna have to construct it. Versus the easement agreement will detail the location, the party responsible for construction, is you know who that will be. It'll be the town, and, um. I just thought it's very minimal mitigation for the applicant versus a long. Expensive project for the town. Because it does cost us three times the amount, and takes us probably three times the amount of time to get it done.
Okay, so this is in the case that M W R A does not approve it. This is Plan B.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Attorney Dinesky, do these, how does this jive with what we would need to include in the easement agreement?
Madam Chair, I think the intention. For the trail is that the applicant constructed, and maybe we. All looked at it with the understanding that that was implicit. I'll defer to Attorney Donahue if he's suggesting otherwise, but that's been my understanding. Because it could be done for reasons stated while there's activity on the site.
Attorney Donahue, is that your un- understanding as well? Oops, sorry, we can't hear you there.
Sorry about that. The, the concept that Kateris' Plan B would build the bypass is acceptable. But the, the last sentence needs to stay in the condition. Um, the construction's only gonna occur after the easement spin is in place. So there isn't some confusion about who's got responsibility once it's built, and so that last sentence needs to stay. We talked about that previously.
Yeah, I think you're, so that was, um, the piece where really the, the deliverable is that you offer it, but you're not bound to the creation of it.
Correct. Right, and we've added provisions as far as. Uh, that you can read in the conditions, uh, of time for the town to respond and commitment to work with the planning director. In the, for the purpose of reaching agreement. I'm sure we will, but I think that last set, if that last sentence is in, then the concept of, of construction. At the applicant's costs and expenses acceptable.
Okay, so Amy, does that satisfy what you were trying to get at?
Yeah, I guess as long as, is this gonna be updated to show who the party responsible for construction is? Can we leave it like that? Or Attorney Dinesky will have to look at it and make sure. I just feel like. If it says the party responsible for construction, then that's open for debate. And after the decision.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, pardon me, pardon. I, I think you, I think you've added up higher, after bypass trail is a defined term, construct it.
Mm-hmm.
And, and if you delete the phrase, the party responsible, I think it speaks pretty eloquently as to who has to build it.
Okay, I just wanna make sure with Attorney Dinesky if that covered what I was trying to do.
Attorney Dinesky, do you think that, um, is clear in this language?
The, the comments that were just made, Madam Chair, will specify. Who's constructing, being the applicant, and removing the party responsible, I think will take care of the question. If, if this needs to be, uh, edited, if you will, not for substance, but for form, we can do so. But I, I think everyone is on the same page as to who is doing what, and then once it's constructed, that the town would be. Uh, responsible for the maintenance.
Okay, got it. The next one I just highlighted, because I was wondering, I did read, um. Very quickly, the Manny Lopez email, just parts of it, and Westboro had done a sound study is what he sent us. And so I was just wondering, it was a question for the board and for the town. Is it okay to have the applicant do the baseline study, or should we have a third party do the baseline study? Because I know sometimes, depending on who does the study. The results could be varied. I don't know. I didn't know if having the applicant do the baseline study was the right way to go, or the applicant. Um, paying for the, another party to do the baseline study.
So is it implied, Lori, that, that, that that's what the applicant would do in general if there were a baseline study?
The way it's written and the, what I expected is that the applicant would hire a firm. And then they would do the, uh, baseline study, and they would provide the study to us. So that's typically what I've seen. Uh, so I have never been in a circumstance where the town hired. A, an acoustical specialist to do a baseline study.
Okay. Uh, but it sounds like Amy was getting a, a third party to do it, which it sounds like that's implied. When the applicant does a baseline study, it is a third party that does that.
Well, usually when you say a third party, then that would mean that we would have to hire. So, you know, we would have to go out to bid, we would have to procure a, a contractor to do the study. And then the applicant would pay for it, so.
Or maybe just, uh, an acoustical engineer, or Amy, is it that you're, you wanna just make sure it's an acoustical engineer of sorts, or?
I just wanted to ask in general, because I know when.
It would be simpler if the applicant hired the specialist, rather than having, you know, the money have to filter through the town.
Yeah.
I, I haven't had any issue with this in the past, you know, the professionals that are hired are professionals, so. I, I haven't seen a circumstance where they've, like, made up figures. Uh, just, you know, fudge the numbers to comply.
When I had said the applicant shall perform baseline study, I just wanted to verify, because I didn't know if that meant like. One of the people on the line here goes out with the machine and says, okay.
Oh, no, no, they'd have.
I was just making sure. You know?
The lack of faith is a hard way to live, Amy.
Well, I'm just being very careful, you know, you are, this is the closest to the residents, and I don't want to have something.
If, if you want us to change the wording to specify that, that they're hiring an acoustical expert, then I'd be happy to do that.
Sure. I have had things come back, and they're like, well, that's not the way it was worded. So I've had faith in the past, and it's come back to haunt me.
Probably not with a builder who's built over millions of square feet in town, but let's, let's move on.
Right? Actually, they were. I'm not gonna name names. This question, um, trucks stored on the project site, I was just asking why on the project was added. I don't know who added it. If there's any meaning for it.
That, that was just to clarify, of course, we, I think that that was a condition that you suggested to begin with. So I think it was Mark who added the language on the project site, but. I, I think it's implicit that we're talking about the project site.
Hmm, I believe I may have made a comment there, and it was to be more particular so that we weren't. Creating language that could conceivably allow for any kinds of trucks, whether related. To the business or not, to be stored on the site.
Okay, I was just, yeah, I just wanted, I noticed it was a change.
And that change, i- it's also based on what's in the language of the second sentence, that. Trucks not associated with the business are, are not to be stored.
Mm-hmm. The next one, we talked about the maximum extent feasible, no mature tree shall be disturbed or removed beyond the silt fence. Without the planning director in consultation with the tree warden. Um, I was wondering if that, the site distance trees also should be reviewed. By the planning director and the tree warden, just. So you don't clear all the front trees and say, well, those are all in the site distance, but it's really, I mean. I just wanted to make sure, because we wanna keep the buffer on the front.
Um, so Lori, do you? That would be the case?
Yeah, so I can just change the wording, uh, to the, so in consult. Add that to the first sentence, so determines that they are dead, damaged, diseased, or impair site distance.
Yeah.
Except, except as already reflected on the approved site plan.
There are already trees marked on the approved site plan.
Guessing that there are trees in the, in the area of disruption, just a guess.
Yeah, so these are only. Outside of the silt fence area.
The, the second sentence makes no reference to the silt area. It talks about the frontage of the property.
Hmm.
Okay.
All right, so we're, we're tying it to the. Planning, verify, some sort of verification, but also noting that whatever's marked in the site, with the exception of what's marked in the site plan.
I just don't want it to be clear cut and say, well, that was on the site distance.
I'll just put it in both locations.
Yeah.
So I'll leave it, the second sentence will be left the way it is. And then I'll also put, or impair site distance to the sentence above, so that should cover it.
Okay.
Second sentence will relate also to the site plan somehow?
It will relate to the site distance.
No, but I'm saying the site plan.
I, I, I don't think that your site plan identified trees that were gonna be, be removed. So the sketch plan shows trees that are gonna remain, so I don't see anywhere on the site plan where it identifies. Trees to be removed outside of the limit of disturbance. So essentially. If there are trees that need to be removed for site distance, they can be marked in the field, and then you can contact our office. And you can say that there are trees that we wanna remove, and then the tree warden and I will go down and we'll look at them.
Mm-hmm. Do you still have concerns with not tying it to the site plan, Attorney Donahue?
Um, I, I, I guess just to be clear, because of the way the sentence talks about the disturbed or removed along the frontage of the property. Um, you know, it, it should, I think, not just refer to the construction of the access driveway, but it should. It's, you know, everything that's shown for disruption on the site plan.
Do, I, I don't really have a problem with that. Uh, board members, do you have a problem with it? The site plan doesn't, if it, whether it has it or not. We're bound to it anyway, so, right, with that?
I'm okay.
Okay, so can we? Okay, so.
I'm confused about what, what the language would be. So, are we leaving the second sentence as is, or are we changing it? So are we leaving the second sentence as is, or are we changing it?
I think it's fine as is.
Okay. So the whole thing stays as is, the why, is that what we're? My main point of this was that, just that. If they're going to clear collect the trees in the front and say it's in the site distance, I wanted to just make sure that. Lori or Scott Chauvin tear went down and said, yeah, you're right, that's in the site distance, or it's a dead tree.
And if I may, I think Attorney Donahue's concept would be, for example, to insert at the. Sentence.
Uh, we can't, we can't hear the attorney. Attorney Donahue, do you want to jump in with what you were proposing there? Sorry.
Sure, in in the phrase, it's in the second sentence that begins right now, except when necessary to construct the access drive. What I suggested, read and said, except is shown within limits of disturbance on the approved site plan.
Yeah, that that's already intuitive. Because the first sentence is saying. Beyond the silt fence, so everything that's within the limit of disturbance is understood that is going to be disturbed. So the silt fence is the limit of disturbance.
So if we're keeping it to that case, then it would just be really bringing up the site distance component. Is that what we're talking about then? And then Attorney Dinesh, you cut up, um, we couldn't hear you, so if you wanted to try to repeat what you're going to say, you're more than welcome to.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Yes, I I think Attorney Donahue addressed the comment, so I don't need to speak any further on that.
Maybe what we should do is just eliminate sentence number two. So.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so so otherwise, we're really just, this is just sticking to the site plan period.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Board okay with that?
I'm okay. Yeah, so what you're saying is if the second sentence goes away. Then they're not taking down trees except for the ones in the site plan?
So so they are taking down all the trees within the limit of disturbance, so that is the silt fence. Outside of the limit of disturbance, they are only allowed to take down the trees that are dead, damaged, diseased. Or in pair site distance, uh, per me and the tree warden. So they have to get approval before they remove those trees.
Okay. Yep. For AA, I just, because I was listening to the meeting last, the last meeting to see what we're talking about. To see what changes changes were made. We were talking about the photometric plan in our bylaws. I mean, maybe it's. We followed bylaws anyways. I just added it because that's what we're talking about. Does the board reserves the right to review the project lighting to ensure compliance with the photometric plan in our bylaws? It really shouldn't change anything. It's just stating.
Would it just be more formal, though, like town and Northborough bylaws or how do we usually?
Yeah.
Just maybe a little more formal.
Okay.
I could say Northborough bylaws and regulations.
Oh, sure, okay.
If you could just add the term applicable, it would help.
Okay, I just wanted to know, like, so-called lighting was added, so I didn't know why it said so-called lighting.
That was my addition to account for the fact that not everyone might know what. The term wall packs means, just to give some context, just for clarity.
Okay, I was just curious.
And then you added.
So the lights, the security lights on the doors, over the doors, would just be shielded straight down. We're on Bartlett has the same. I went over there, their door height and their full cut shielded straight down. And then the last one is, um, well, actually, second to last one. This one was changed where it said if tractor trailers arrive early, they may park on site. Provided in all events, such tractor trailers comply with condition. I I. You're in.
So this was, um, of course, back at the beginning, we had talked about. The trucks that are parked on Bartlett Street. So what happens if, um, trucks arrive early? Do you really want them to park on Bartlett Street? Do you want them to find other private parking lots to park in? Or do you want them to just, uh, move into the property and then? Turn off their engines? So it was my understanding from our prior conversations that we wanted. Them to make accommodations for trucks that arrive early. So when we were doing our discussion, they agreed that they would be willing to do that. So this would solve another problem that we have about trucks parking. In properties that are not the destination. So that they can wait until the allowed hours. So that was the point. I am concerned about the modified language. Because once again, now we have the problem with snow plowing activities. We have the problem with people who go after hours, they work after hours. Or maybe they forget their cell phone and they come to work for one reason or another outside of the hours. So I really don't like the language. There shall be no vehicular movement. That's going to be problematic.
Originally, it was like no outside activities, including delivery van or commercial trucks.
And I I thought we moved away from that language because everybody agreed that that wasn't. The the proper language.
Well, we wanted to get away from, um. Specifying what kind of vehicles, like we didn't mind the parked car. We talked about not minding if there were an employee parked car, parking their car situation, but we didn't want. Things like deliveries to happen overnight and we were getting away from just the coupling and decoupling. So in the edit that was made, it was left to their, it was left to the. Oh, no, I see delivery still there. I'm sorry. So that is still, deliveries are coupling or decoupling of tractor trailers.
I just saw adding the tractor trailers arriving now, opening it back up. So now we were having no trucks arriving and departing between ten and six. And all of a sudden, it's like, well, the trucks can arrive early, so then all of a sudden it's going to open it up to trucks coming in. All hours of the night again, and I thought that's what we were getting away from.
But I I thought that we had discussed that you want to find a solution to the parks, the trucks being illegally parked. When they show up early. So then this language about allowing them to arrive, but then they have to park. So they arrive, they park, they turn off their engines. So I I thought that that's what we wanted. That was the direction we wanted to go.
I would think on other sites, but not the ones next to the residential neighborhood. Like, they can't park on Bartlett anyways or within the neighborhood, so.
But they do. That's the problem.
Right, but they.
Why they turn around?
Or they shouldn't.
The other thing is that they're not allowed to couple or decouple, so they're stuck there either way. Even if they show up early, they can't drop their trailer because they can't decouple.
And I think that could actually create more of a larger issue with these trucks not being able to park there. They are going to end up on Bartlett. They're going to end up in residential neighborhoods. They're going to be looking for places to go. I mean, inherently, they're going to get there. Some will get there earlier than.
Yeah.
Seven o'clock, so to me, this is almost, that's a problem.
I agree.
So we want to keep the language the way it was originally?
I think so.
I think it's opening a door, but everybody's going to vote. I mean, I'm just one person.
I mean, I do see what you're saying, Amy, for sure. It's a door opener, but I do also see the point of what. Trying to foresee what is going to happen if they can't park there. They're not going to just not come. They're going to start parking in Sturrock. They're going to start parking. You know, on Cedar Hill or wherever else, and I know the soccer place already has an issue with. With, um, trucks trying to park over there and it just, it'll just seep into the local areas where. This may actually solve for that.
I know in Holliston, they had the no movement of trucks between ten PM and six AM, so that's why.
Yeah, I is is Holliston right next to residential?
Yep.
It is, yeah. I don't know. I think that this is a better solution. I honestly think that there's potential that that's still going to happen where. That area might be full and they got to go somewhere else, but I I think at least we have some options.
But it's not going to be other trucks too. Now you've got the Amazon, they're still going to be parking. And. These guys are going to say, well, we're here early, so now instead of six AM, we're going to start arriving at four AM. And we're going to get all our trucks lined up, ready to go to start doing our business. So I think it's opening the door of all the trucks. They'll be told, you can arrive at four AM, you just have to park. I don't know.
I I don't know. I I I feel like you're you're kind of going down the road there, so no pun intended. Um, so far that that we can't prevent all of those circumstances. And I think this is a, to me, this is a a a good effort towards trying to minimize it. Because they, uh, you know, they're not making money if they're just sitting there, so that's not an ideal transportation logistic anyways. I I am okay with the way it was originally.
Okay, it sounds like Millie is okay with it. Anthony was okay with it. Bill is okay with it, so probably within that part, we'll probably have to stay. For majority. I do like quantifying how often the temporary. Because we run into that where there's a temporary waiver and next thing you know, it's a year round thing.
Yep, I agree with that.
Well, it, but but if I might, um, I mean, that that waiver is from the planning director. Under certain circumstances in which it's been demonstrated to his or her satisfaction. And to whatever extent that person reports to you or works with you, that there's good cause for it. I I don't see any reason to arbitrarily say it can only be this amount of time if there's a reason for it. And, you know, there's been communication, whether that's the only communication or history communication between the user. The planning director and perhaps others in the town. I mean, I think you have to, at some point, trust. Trust your professionals that can exercise good faith. Um, as to how they're doing, probably going to report to you or future members of the board. As to and and take your feedback on it. I don't see any benefit to arbitrarily just picking seven days out of. A block of time.
Lori, what would you, what would you view temporary to mean? Just so we can at least see if we're on the same ballpark with what temporary means.
So, um, in my opinion, if they were to call me up and they said, um. It's hard to forecast what the the rationale could be, but they said. You know, we have, uh, go ahead and add a business sale and we need to. Uh, start deliveries an hour earlier than we typically do for a three day period of time. Is that okay? Then that would be an extraordinary circumstance. If it's just. Well, hey, you know, for the next six months, we want to open up, um, we want to deliver at. Uh, five AM, then, you know, what's what's your cause? Well, we just want to. That that wouldn't be good cause, in my opinion. So it would have to be for a temporary period of time. And it would have to be an extraordinary circumstance that isn't going to repeat itself. Like every single month or every other week or whatever.
So Attorney Dinesh, is there a way to, without to mark Donahue's point of picking something subjectively? Is there a way to make it so that we're not looking at, you know, like a six month? Is it defined here well enough just to call it good cause, or is there anything else we could do for this?
Madam Chair, the way it is worded, it would be within the discretion of the planning director and conceivably. Uh, no waiver could be granted because it's, planning director may authorize. You could say that a period of any particular authorized exception would be X days. But I suppose you could, you could then continue to have a debate about. How many of those periods could happen within a larger period of time? I think it certainly gives, as it was originally worded. Very broad discretion to the planning director. Because it's conceivable that no waivers would be granted and and that would be permissible because the language just says may grant.
What about?
May authorize.
What about limiting, uh, a temporary waiver can be no more than X period of time? Like, in other areas of bylaws, we put like what temporary means.
And that's, that's what I was suggesting, that if you wanted to do something, I think that would be the way to do it. To essentially attempt to describe. What constitutes temporary.
Okay.
I I I think with with all due respect, I I think we're trying to micromanage off of the anecdote. Um, and I I really don't see the harm in having. Paid professional staff make a determination with full unfettered authority to make it. You know, by way of example, if if we're going to do examples, if a user warehouses retail products. And seeks to have three additional deliveries between ten PM and eleven PM during November and December. That may be acceptable, depending on how many they are. And what size the vehicles are and a whole bunch of other information the director, the planning director could take into consideration. Just picking a date or something is just making it up as you go and and you're trying to. You're trying to cure an ill, but frankly, I don't see how it exists with the unfettered authority the director has.
Well, you just stated two months that you're going to add an extra hour and see. That may not.
Two months, three days a week.
That may be not be a big deal to you, but it may be a big deal to us and where maybe we take out the whole temporary waiver altogether. Like, I feel like different people have different ideas of temporary.
And that's the point. That's the, the, the point is, you may feel differently about the waiver. It's, can I send three trucks out? Between ten and eleven PM, between November and December to ship my goods faster. Than you would feel about, can I run trucks unstopped, unlimited between ten PM and six PM? All of the factors that would get to a yes are going to have to be presented by whoever needs it at that time. And you've got, I I I honestly, particularly given the history you have as a community. Of the two last, the planners you've had, the idea that those planners can't act in a responsible fashion astounds me.
Well, temporary signs stay out for a year because you can't enforce it. I mean, it's, that's just what I, we've heard in the past, temporary.
The answer, you're missing the point, with all due respect. The answer is you can't do it unless you get relief. It's different than a temporary sign where you can do it, but then you got to supposed to take it down. The answer here is you can't do anything until the director tells you to. There's nothing wrong with giving that person full authority to make that decision based upon all the facts and circumstances.
And I I'm assuming that with that that waiver that was granted, there would be a time limit within the waiver granted.
I would assume that would be.
Yeah, right. So that would be between the planning director and uh, the the waiver applicants, no matter what.
I don't know, we've had trouble in the past, um, agreeing on the word temporary and we run into problems when there's not at least some sort of trigger. Maybe it's just it renews after after thirty days, needs to be renewed, reevaluated and renewed, because what if we discover in this temporary permit, there's some sort of backlash we didn't anticipate and there's no like now, then we're stuck, like, is there a point where we actually decide, okay, it's actually not a big deal? No problem, renew it for another thirty days, or whatever it is, whatever the example, but I don't know that the word as subjective as temporary that we've had problems with in the past is something we just wanna throw out there and not have something, it doesn't have to be the one, I'm not saying it's one week per quarter, but is there a renewal? Temporary waiver has to be reviewed after thirty days, or something like that.
I'm actually concerned opening it at all.
That within the word temporary or within the waiver, it has to say a time limit, we could specify that. You know, that's something the planning director would specify within the waiver. I think that's their jurisdiction, not ours. Do you know what I'm saying?
If you wanna limit her authority or his or her authority, pardon, um, to no more than thirty days or forty days consecutive days, I I don't even know what you're trying to get to here. Um, then do that, I mean, I I think giving some flexibility under the circumstances is not evil.
And the planning director may authorize an exception or time limited temporary waiver to this. It already says time limitation. So it already says that, so I understand what the, what the concern is. But I, I think it's, it's inherent. I I think you're concerned that that we have temporary as an undefined amount in other elements, but this is a place where we could specify a time on it, that would be up to Lori.
I actually think it's just another job for Lori, and I'm actually against the waiver right now because you know, we we had stated ten to six, we started like other hours. Now we're already at to ten to six, and now we're gonna have temporary waivers with no set times, I just think it's gonna open up a can of worms. And the neighbors are gonna be like, well, you had ten to six, now we've got forty days out of the year, we have trucks coming at three in the morning. I really think it's gonna be an enforcement nightmare and it's opening up just a can of worms, we don't know who's gonna be here. Let's wait to see who the applicant is, let's wait to see who comes in. And they can come back for an amendment if ten to six doesn't work for them, like, I feel like we're opening doors and we're gonna have consequences that we're gonna um, which won't be happy, I think so.
I I I don't disagree that all that could happen, but if we have to come back every single time on thirty seven conditions, once we get a, an applicant or a a a tenant, that's a bit of an obstacle.
Right, but it's only one condition.
Uh, it's been mentioned a few times that to come back, to come back once, and and I understand it, but at the same time, I I think this is.
I don't know, when I talk to uh other towns, they're like, who's doing shell warehouses now, and they have them come back when they know who the applicant is, and then they set the strict rules with what hours and stuff.
Can I ask, Laurie, what do you think of this? Since you're the one who's gonna have to do the work.
You know, I I tend to be very conservative. If I feel uncomfortable, so say there weren't asks that I I would think that the planning board may be uncomfortable with, then I would certainly have a conversation with at least Carrie about it. And uh, see if we could get on the same page as to whether the waiver should be granted or not. So, you know, for for something like this, for me, it would have to be an extraordinary circumstance, like if it were the holiday season and we're talking about two weeks once a year, then uh, yeah, I may be inclined uh, during the month of December to allow it for two weeks once a year. Um, but that's it.
So to me, I heard instead of good cause, we're talking about extraordinary circumstance, so would that make you feel any better, Amy, if it weren't just good cause, like Lori keeps saying the word is extraordinary circumstance?
I guess that would help, but I'm not really, I'm getting more and more concerned by it. Because, you know, twenty years from now, this is gonna be the same condition and people change. And I just thought we were talking about hours where the trucks wouldn't be disturbing the neighborhood. And now we're opening up different areas of this condition. Now the trucks can arrive, now we're gonna have waivers, it's just concerning because I've heard of what the has happened in the past.
Yeah, and I understand that the trucks are gonna arrive anyways, they have. So would you rather have, I mean, I don't wanna go back to that discussion, but they're gonna arrive, we know that. Um, I I think the the waiver is is under the jurisdiction of the the planning board and maybe we can can you know, create that or craft that in a certain way, whether it's a certain amount of time. But I can understand it, if there are circumstances, you know, you have a a three day blizzard and people aren't able to go, they they need their things and and deliveries need to be made, just like when you have a you know, delays on airports, things have to get done. And they have to make, you have to have accommodations in some way, if you don't have any accommodations, I think that's worse. This one, at least you can be somewhat in control of and be prepared for.
Um, Bill, you would ask a question of Lori, did you have a thought based on her answer or an opinion based on her answer?
No, I I I completely agree with Lori, I I think, you know, she would definitely, you know, I like changing it to, you know, um, what was the word you used, Lori? Um, exceptional circumstances instead of good cause. Right, cause good cause could be, you know, just a good reason. But, you know, we don't want this, you know. I do have a a little bit of a concern with what Lori said about something that would happen like every year. Right, so like Christmas time, holiday time, right, so it's every year that this is how this request is being made. I would have a little bit of a problem with that. Um, because, again, that's not an exceptional circumstance, that is general, you know, business. Um, you know, and I don't wanna set the expectation to, you know, good years as well, that, you know, all you have to, you know, once it happens once, you can come and do this every time. Right, I I don't wanna set that expectation either, so so that's why I have a little bit of a problem with the good cause instead of exceptional circumstance. I think other than that, I think, you know, Lori's answer was was exactly what I needed.
Okay, Anthony, we haven't heard from you on this one, your thoughts?
Must stop, I mean, I I understand everybody's point here, but I I'll go back to, you know, with the strict hours, I think you're gonna have a bigger problem that we've seen in the past with trucks having nowhere to go. Um, I do think the temporary waiver is concerning, uh, as as it's worded, I think it needs to have kind of better guardrails with it, and I, but I don't know what the answer would be and how to limit timeframes and how many, how often they can do it. At like, the argument is that once a year, or twice a year, um, as a usual manner of their business. Um, but I don't know.
Um, so I think, did you call it extraordinary circumstance, Lori?
Yep.
Um, yeah, I guess Bill brings up a good point, if it's just part of doing business, it's really not um, anything extraordinary. Lori, how do you view that, you know, something repeated every year, it's the same thing, it's just part of their business?
Uh, if you, if you folks have particular parameters that you wanna put around with it, I I'm fine. If, um, like I said, the holiday season, if they were to call me up and they said, you know, we need to push this week, we won't ask you to do it ever again, it's an extraordinary circumstance, then I would think that that would fall under extraordinary circumstance, so I'd probably be willing to grant that. If that's not in keeping what you folks want, then I I'm gonna need you to clarify what you want.
And we're not gonna be on the board forever either, so there has to be some sort of, has to be something in here. Because this condition goes forever, but Lori won't be here forever, we won't be here forever, like.
Or maybe you can just leave it to my discretion, and then I could just have that conversation with whoever is the chair at the time. Um, about whether it's appropriate or not, and we can just work it out, it's hard to figure out what a circumstance could be. Because number one, we don't know who the tenant is gonna be. And number two, um, I mean, we have no idea what what type of warehousing they're gonna be doing, wha- what's their product? So
Yeah.
If their product is uh, something essential uh, that has like, if their emergency supplies, then that is a different circumstance than if their product was, um, swimming pool rafts, you know?
Yeah, so to Amy's point about when it's, there's a just build to spec and no tenant, they'd be, they'd actually in a way be better off coming to say, here's what our business is, here's what we need, you have ten to six, but every December, we're gonna need these two weeks. And we know it in advance, we're telling you in advance, and we say, or whoever says, no problem, that's fine, that's two weeks, we know it. Party of business, and then we don't have, I I don't know, it almost seems better to just lay it out upfront of what their business requires. So then I feel like granting them what, say it is somewhere that during the Christmas, that's when they sell most of their stuff. So we're gonna limit their ability to do business for the subsequent twenty years they're there, because we just let them do that one time, it just seems like it's actually better to come back with their true circumstance in a way.
It does make sense.
I don't know, Attorney Donnie, would you rather have the ability to just come with the, what you actually, what the business actually needs, or?
Oh, I I I think all of this gets to the same point, sometimes you know what you need, sometimes you don't know, and you run into it. You know, we, if if we back up, the concept of restrictions on hours of operation uh, was not acceptable to the applicant. Um, we have tried to work toward a condition that works to define what can happen on the site during these protected hours and what can't happen during that. What is equally important to the applicant, so that we go to market, is the ability for somebody to be able to say, not, you know, we're not in a in a negotiation with a tenant about what if this happens, what if this happens, you know, it says you can't do it, you know, to at least be able to have some kind of circuit breaker, and says you go to a paid staff person, you lay it out to them why you need to be able to do something, why it's not gonna hurt the neighborhood in some fashion in the scope of your entire use for the course of the year, and you can make your argument. You know, I think that's, I think that's fair for everybody, you know, we're talking about somebody who delivers during, you know, a lot of products during Christmas, during Christmas period of time. That might mean that they, you know, their latest delivery after that for the other forty eight weeks a year is six PM. You know, that would be a factor that the the planning director might take into consideration based upon all of it. And this whole concept of trying to get ahead of it, basically to be able to say to control the the planning director. I I'm just having a hard time understanding why the board feels it need to do that with the planning director. As I think any planning director who likes their job would do, is going to speak at least to the board chair about a request.
Um, okay, so here, I have a a thought then, what if um, we change good cause to extraordinary circumstance, but then put in something like in the, in the event of a repeat, uh, repeated request or repeat request, they'd come back for a modification. Because I think what Bill was getting at is, it's really not extraordinary if every year they they know they need Christmas. So just come back and request Christmas, don't like refile for a temporary waiver every year.
When, when I suggest you take the concept differently, that the board, you know, um, that an applicant may apply to the board to modify the prohibition between ten PM and six AM, but that goes to the board.
So then it would be, you could still, the planning director can still authorize the exception, but the applicant may apply to the board to modify the hours of operation.
Yeah, so that, you know, I think, to get to the, I, what I'm hearing at least is a theme, that once we know who it is, then ten PM to six AM might be open for discussion with the board, I I don't know, well, you know, that just gets too conjecture. But that's what I think up here.
What members thoughts on that?
Well, they're only gonna come back if they want, like, twelve to five, like, if they want less hours. So I don't know, and that opens it up.
Well, but they may also just come back just for those two weeks, like I said, if it's somebody at Christmas time, and they just need that additional two weeks. You know, they can come back to the board, and we can just say, you know, yeah, we understand your business and we understand that you're busy for these, you know, two weeks before Christmas every year, so you know, we'll go ahead with that because you've been, you know, good to the town the rest of the time, or something along that line. That modification might not be that you can just do whatever you want during those hours, it might be the ten PM becomes eleven PM, or something of that nature. I mean, let them make their argument to you what they need, rather than trying to guess. But give the planning director the ability under, whether it's extraordinary circumstances or good cause, to be able to respond to the, to the one off kind of situation, whatever that may be.
Yep.
I get confused, what you're saying is that the planning director decides if it's extraordinary circum- circumstances, but then they come to the board to ask for the waiver?
You you just make it clear to, I think, as a condition of approval, that if if the ten PM to six AM won't work fifty two weeks a year to someone, that they can come to the board rather than anticipating, they go to the planning director for, you know, that kind of recurrence. But the planning director can at least provide that circuit breaker. If somebody has an extraordinary circumstance, they can do something between ten PM and six AM as long as they talk to the bill, the planning director, pardon me, at least two days in advance.
So then what are they coming back to us for, to change?
Because they know, because they know for, between March and and their, you know, whatever business, like you know, between March and May, they need to be able to get deliveries from their supplier between ten PM and midnight.
So, Amy, I think what he's saying, uh, if I may, is that if we know the applicant, the applicant comes before us, if they know they're gonna not have meet some of those criteria within the timeframe, but if it's a one off, then it goes to to Lori. I think it's, that's sort of a compromise between both of the better situations.
So if it's a one off, that means once in the whole year, someone, I I guess I don't get it. Like, maybe they just go to the board for any type of exception temporary waiver.
Chances are extraordinary, chances are extraordinary circumstances, don't provide for thirty days notice, public hearing, notice advanced until the butters and everything else, extraordinary circumstances needs action, I don't know how long it's gonna be. You know, you don't have to constrain your planning director to act like a rogue, it's just, this is incomprehensible way of this discussion.
So seasonable, seasonable, um, seasonable. Um, it wouldn't be extraordinary, so if every year they're coming back, like you said, that's not considered extraordinary, extraordinary is I have eggs that are gonna expire and I have to get it there tomorrow night?
No, so.
Seasonal events aren't extraordinary, so that would be something that comes to the planning board?
Yep.
Yes, so, like, it's, yeah, so it's the Christmas example or whatever the case that comes to the board, but if Lori needs that flexibility to grant within forty eight hours, that emergency, I guess, cause in a way, then she has the ability to do that.
That's what I would say. That's what I would say. It has to be like an emergency. If it's, if that's what we're saying, if there are two different avenues.
Yeah.
I, I don't know. I, I don't want to use the word emergency. I think exceptional circumstances is, is is sufficient. I.
So I'm only suggesting extraordinary because Lori's use it and also because we have authorized an exception. So it sounds like it's just duplicative language, but either way, I assume the same thing.
Yeah. I mean, it could even be something like, you know, a store, snowstorm came and, you know, they're, they're backed up for two days, you know, they got backed up for two days and they needed a couple of extra hours over the next week to make up for it.
I agree. That's what, you know, like an airport that gets closed down, things happen. I'd rather be prepared for it than be caught off guard and then have to figure out how to navigate it. But yeah. I mean, I.
I would rather them come to us and ask us rather than them, you know, whoever the tenant is feel like they don't have any choice but to break the rules.
If it's a recurring issue.
Or no, even just the one-off. I don't want them to feel like they have to break the rules. You know, here's, here you can, you know, you can do this one time. You know, and, and you know, because of this snowstorm, you know, you get, you get a pass. Or because of, you know, whatever the extraordinary circumstances.
Lori, your thoughts on that?
I, I think it would be, um, more prudent to put extraordinary circumstance in my hands than in the board's hands. Because you folks only meet twice a month. So if I have to wait for a planning board meeting uh, to put this before you, then chances are the extraordinaries, either they will just violate the hours, uh, break the rules, or the extraordinary circumstance will no longer exist by the time the meeting takes place. So I, I don't, I don't think that would be helpful.
Okay. What about the second part? If it's some sort of recurring modification, if it's some sort of like known modification that comes to the planning board, um, may apply to the board to modify.
Absolutely. So if it was going to be, you know, definitely something that is going to happen a few times a year for a certain, uh, even an entire month during the month of December, then I think that would be wise to put it before the planning board.
Okay. So how do board members feel about that then?
I'm fine with that.
Member of the town works.
Sure. I just have to see how to word it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um. So wording aside, um, Attorney Donahue does that, it was your suggestion. So I assume that's something you agree with as well?
Yes, I do. Yes.
I, I would suggest making it administrative process. So it's not something that we're required to advertise. It's just something that goes before the board. No public hearing, just a regular request.
So whatever that looks like, is that something, um, Attorney Dinesh, you could help with maybe nail down?
Yes, the concept is that there's, as Attorney Donahue has described, the circuit breaker, which would be the extraordinary circumstance that is the administrative action of a planning director and an amendment process where if it's known that there are particular periods of time that use is desired outside the hours that have been specified, that could be the subject of an application to the board.
Okay. And so I just, I mean, I'm not looking to like change the hours. I don't want a modification like all of a sudden this is like, you know, whatever, 24 hour operation. I'm just, this in my mind, this is about a recurring issue that they just need, um, relief from.
Uh, I was going to suggest maybe just a sentence that says that is recurring or extensive um, requirements for waiver shall require board administrative approval.
Okay.
And I think that informs the planning director in the future as to some parameters as to how far you can go.
Okay.
So I, I wrote the language as follows. The applicant may modify the hours of operation on a recurring basis by request to the planning board via the administrative approval process. Is that okay?
Yep.
What is the administrative approval process?
It just means there's no public hearing. So it would just be placed on the agenda. No public comment, no public hearing. It would just be a simple letter. Um, that, uh, you know, once the planning board renders the decision, a letter is written up saying this is what is agreed upon by the board on such and such date. So it's a, it's a much simpler, faster process. It would be considered a minor modification.
So I think, um, I, I don't mind the language, but I did like the way I think Attorney Donahue said for recurring or extensive requirements um, should require board administrative approval. It just seemed a little cleaner, but. So not long-term waivers. It was any other or any recurring.
I put modify hours of operation on a recurring basis.
Okay. Got it. That's fine. That's fine. On a recurring basis. Shall require board administrative approval.
I, and I don't think you need any other recurring, maybe just any recurring. Yeah. I don't think I'm writing it because I think.
All right, Lori, you have it down either way. So you're.
All right, fine. If we're going to leave this at the top though, we had before and it, it was similar to another condition up there where it was any delivery vans or tractor trailer deliveries. You know, I think we have another condition and we were matching it. Oh, I, I remember that. Yeah. Um. Delivery vans and commercial trucks.
Well, then we were talking about, we, we, the language was commercial vehicles. And then we were talking about the fact that there may be cars delivering, you know, they, they have the logo emblazoned on them and they're selling uh, polar spring water. Um, so there are commercial vehicles that aren't trucks. So that's why we specified tractor trailers.
Right. But I also, I think we had talked about, we also didn't want delivery vans coming and going because that's the the noise and the so it should be no deliveries, shipping and delivery between 10 and 6. I thought what we were trying to get done here was to make sure there wasn't a lot of noise in deliveries, shipping and delivery between 10 and 6. And then now we've opened it up to allow them to arrive early. But I mean, if there are vans coming and going all night, it could be just as loud as tractor trailers coming and going all night with the backup beepers. And just the noise of coming and going all night. I guess what I thought was between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, there weren't going to be any deliveries. Unless we have extraordinary circumstances.
I, I can just eliminate, there's a, a tractor trailer. There shall be no deliveries or coupling or decoupling of tractor trailers.
Yeah. That makes sense because that makes sense. Okay.
Right. Or no commercial vehicle deliveries. Well, any delivery. Yeah.
Okay. So the next part actually stays. They can park. The next part then goes.
Oh, S. I'm sorry. Um, that was Mark had wanted to add a phrase under S1. This had to do with the conservation restriction. So it's just another title for the conservation restriction. So he wanted to add the words to make a copy of the recorded conservation restriction or declaration of restriction. So figure you guys don't have an issue with that. It's just the change of wording.
What is that? So. Is that repeated?
S1.
So that the words or declaration of restriction would be added after conservation restriction.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Was that the only one?
That's it.
Okay. I was just going to go back to HH and make sure everybody got to read it and that's what they want to see. Except for the last sentence I didn't do. I, Lori has it.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So I guess I have a pretty choppy condition because I don't have the second half.
That's okay. Lori, you can fill in the second part.
Um, so it's my understanding that the last sentence in that HH is the planning director may authorize an exception or temporary waiver to this time limitation for extraordinary circumstance if notified at least 48 hours in advance. And then the last sentence, uh, is what I just read.
Okay. I think that sounds right versus Amy. I think you.
Oh yeah. Mine's all screwed up.
All right. That's great. Okay. And then the last one here.
The last one I had was, I guess the concern when I was reading through it is material change or substantial modification, except in all instances of reduction in size, which I think is great to reduce the size. But if, um, they reduce the size and then end up moving the parking lot on the side of the building near the residence. I was wondering if it's easier just to say what we had for one lineman. Approval is for the project is presented in the application and supporting documents provided to the board with specific references to planned statements related materials so that a change from the application approved would require a modification to the site plan and decision. So any changes would have to come back because you could say, all right, if we reduce the size, we're okay with it, but a reduction in size could lead to all different types of changes. Which I think it's great. I would love it if they came back and reduced the size. But.
The, the concern is addressed by the language that's configuration of the property changes. But a, a reduction in size and reduction simply in a previous area without a change in configuration is, is not something that should require a board to do. If you pick up the parking and move it to another area, that's changing the configuration. All you do is reduce impervious area. You don't need to look at.
Okay. As long as Attorney Dinesh, you agree.
Attorney Dinesh, does that make sense to you?
Yes. The configuration would certainly address moving elements of the project from one place on the site to another. And we've got the words configuration and footprint of the project.
One concern to another one, I had any amendment shall be subject to the same submittal review in hearing procedures as the original filing. To me, I was wondering, does that mean in 20 years, if they come back and say, we want to make a change? Now we're following 2019 bylaws, where actually it would be probably just a change in non-conforming use. I just didn't know if we needed that sentence. I mean, does it set us up for? I think if procedures and rulings change between now and then, we would want to follow the current procedures.
Hmm. Attorney Dinesh, do you have thoughts on that one?
Madam Chair, I think this sentence could be modified by simply changing the phrase at the end, the original filing to an original filing. Cause I am construing this as the procedural requirements or rules for processing an amendment application. And therefore saying that those same kinds of submittals and review procedures that would apply to an original filing would also apply to an amendment filing.
I agree with that.
That would make more sense. I just didn't want to go back to 2019 rules.
Got it. Okay. So that works for that one?
Um, for me and how, what does everybody else think?
Other board members, does that work?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay. All right. I'm going to open it up for, uh, public comments this time. So if you have a comment, I'm going to bring you in here. I see John Wickstead has had his hand up.
Hi.
Good. Thanks.
Good. John Wickstead, uh, to Sturrock Lane. Um, I, I have a, a couple of comments. Um, I appreciate the discussion around having a licensed site uh, professional. I think you should make a comment that the licensed site professional should be chosen by the planning board and paid for by Gateras. I think the planning board ought to have the option to choose an independent licensed site planner that isn't a regular client of Gateras. I think that just keeps it clean. Uh, second, as far as the STG rating goes, the whole reason we have STG ratings is for standards. And if we don't specify an STG rating in the document, then Gateras could put up whatever they want. You know, the whole point here is to have a standard that's enforceable. The STG rating system goes from 25, which is basically nothing to 65, which is basically, you know, soundproof. And I think picking something right in the middle is sensible. I think an STG rating of 45 is, you know, about what you'd see with a masonry wall. I think that's perfectly reasonable compromise. But not specifying this opens it up for them to put up whatever kind of crappy plastic fence they want. And that is certainly not in the best interest of the town or the residents. Um, just to comment on the color, I, I'm not sure why, why it's better for Gateras to have two sides, one color and two sides, another color. Like if it's going to look better brown and green from Sturrock Brook, wouldn't it look better brown and green from every direction? Um, that's just a, a comment. Um, as far as idling goes, uh, doesn't really matter what you specify. Living in this area, I can tell you these trucks idle whenever they want to. And all winter long, you'll see trucks out there for 20, 30, 50 minutes idling along. It's difficult to enforce. Um, I, I would make a couple of comments about, um, HH and the limited hours. There's two problems here. One is the truck showing up and not being able to get in because there's other trucks in their way. That's when they plan, you know, that's when they tend to park on the street. You know, no parking and they just lay wherever they want to, but it's not really because they're there in bad hours. It's because there's other trucks in their way. I, I tend to think this is going to be less of a problem here if you're operating during regular business hours. The biggest problem we have really with the operating hours is is the tractors and the drivers sleeping in the vehicles. Um, we still have yet to find a good way to handle this. If you drive past 330 Bartlett Street, um, any time of the night, and you know, I know because I'm going into the hospital on call, you'll have eight, 10, 12 trucks out there sometimes just parked in the parking lot of 330 Bartlett Street with tractor trailer guys, you know, all in their cabs sleeping. Um, you can talk to Chief Liver about this. I know he feels strongly about this as well. It's not good for Northboro. You know, it's not good for us to have, you know, guys from out of town sleeping. You know, filling up the parking lots out there. Um, it's not good for my neighborhood. It's not good for Northboro. And I would strongly suggest that you put some language in here prohibiting people from sleeping in their vehicles. And that you enforce these, uh, these restriction hours. You know, it's important, particularly given that these warehouses are going to be right next to the residential area that, you know, people can put their kids to bed and not expect them to be woken up by backup trucks. Um, you know, you've got it currently written as there shall be no deliveries. And I might suggest respectfully that you put, there should be no deliveries to or from the property. Just to be very clear that, you know, they can't bring it all in at 10 o'clock and send it all out at 11. You know, they can't bring it all in at ten o'clock and send it all out at eleven o'clock. Um, you know, deliveries is a little bit vague and I might say deliveries to or from the building. Um, if you don't have strict hours, then then really there's no teeth for this at all. Um, the last thing I would say is um. You know, I sent the board a little picture of the. Of the sound diagrams that the the sound and the light diagrams are particularly important here. And um, you know, I think that the idea of the. Fence just being left open. Um, you know, leaves it open for Gateras to put whatever, you know, crappy picket fence they want to, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Another comment here, hold on a second. Okay. I think uh it's the last number of the phone number is three seven six, I think Manny is that you, I believe? Okay, um, if you just state your name and address, I think you're still on mute. Might be, is it star six on the phone, is that what it is to unmute yourself? Hmm, still on mute there. I do think it's star six, if you try that. Oops, there you go.
Thank you, you're right, with star six, not pound six. Sorry about that.
No problem, just your name and address.
Yeah, hi, this is Manny Lopes, uh ninety-six Bartlett Street. And um, you know, I appreciate you guys uh taking a look at what I had sent over today, um. Uh, one of the things I'd like to do before right off the bat is I I def- definitely agree with uh Jack Wickstead that uh. You know, the the town, the protecting the town and the residents' interest, I think even. You know, um, you know, maybe it's okay with Gateras, but I think it it really should be done. Uh, by the town selecting the uh acoustics uh engineering firm to do it and. Gateras obviously should pay for it since they're the one that making the applications, but I I think having them. Um, make the selection and pay the firm uh really is not something that is. My view, good business practice on if I was the town to allow my uh the person to. Pick their engineering firm of their choosing. Uh, so the other thing is, is I know there was some discussions about the the what I sent over about the ten dB. Uh, and and first of all, I have to say I'm really glad that the that the town has its own bylaws because the ten dB is a state requirement. And the ten dB applies to ambient noise assessments. And the reason the other towns all have um noise assessment studies done. As part of the path to approval of site plans is because. Any abatement required, noise abatement requirements. Says it has to meet the state or in Northborough's case, which is good, five dB above ambient noise. We have to know the the current ambient noise in that neighborhood that's abutting this plant, this warehouse. Beforehand, and then that ambient noise, knowing what's gonna go on at that facility. You can then apply the state law or the the town's bylaw or five dB and say. Take your noise level measurements after the fact and determine what barriers required. To achieve no more than a five dB increase in noise level from ambient. Uh, residential areas, but I don't see how we can do anything without first getting that ambient noise. Before anything is done on site so that you have pre-existing ambient noise measurements, so. Um, I I think the law will will then dictate to you folks. You know, what's gonna be required based on that study, what what whether it's an urban berm. It's a seven foot or fourteen foot or whatever it is to achieve. That five dB noise level above ambient, it'll that study will dictate what the conditions are that you're gonna have to apply to this plan. For Gateras to meet that ordinance requirement. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to mention on the noise issue, there was some discussions that I thought I heard relative to. Well, you know, trucks are not not covered by that noise ordinance, well. The operating noise of vehicles are set by the EPA at the federal level, right? Which basically engine noise slash muffler exhaust noise from these vehicles and ought to be registered have to be a certain threshold. Uh, have to be below a certain threshold. But on this site, there is other vehicle related noises that I think are applicable, and I think some of the planning board members have mentioned it. There's the backup alarms, the coupling, decoupling noise, these are, these are not exempt in my opinion from having to meet. The state regulations or on noise levels above ambient. So um, so anyways, I think that that would be my major uh comments on this thing, so I do appreciate your. Uh, consideration of trying to do something on the study, is there a plan to do the study though beforehand? I I I could not determine what the timeline on this study that you're looking at relative to.
Amy, could you pull, could you scroll to that, I know you highlighted it earlier, um, let's just take a look together. If you don't mind. I think it was at the beginning and you had highlighted it in yellow.
It wasn't you, I unhighlighted it, but.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Right here.
And Carrie, one of the things that's interesting is all the noise studies that I saw about the other towns reviewing site requirement, site, you know, petitioning for site plans for their town. It seems like they all knew what was coming in, Westborough was last mile type warehouse facility or it was the Ken's Warehouse type thing. You know, and the the Holliston uh sites all knew what the source of the noise was based on the tenant and occupants that's gonna be in the buildings. That they're doing the study for, we seem to be left in the dark as to who's gonna be in the facility, you know, and I think that's complicating all the discussions about hours of operation. You know, what activities on site and and you know, extraordinary circumstances to allow them to do things, it's because Gateras isn't coming to us with a known tenant. And it seems like the other towns all seem to have that information is so they can factor that into their approval process and conditions applied to the site plan.
Right. Okay, go ahead.
Just a quick question, because I I think I need to clarify that the noise level is assessed at the boundary. So you can have a noise level that's greater than five decibels on the property as long as it doesn't exceed. That level of five decibel di- differences at the boundary.
Okay, that's at the bottom, so if you.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I, yeah, I was gonna say, so when you say the boundary, you would be saying the boundary with at the residential area?
Uh, the property lines in general.
So then property line.
Coupling and decoupling or or that, I don't know, HVAC or some compressor noise. Is greater than five decibels on the site, let's say within on the other side of the 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 warehouse. But it doesn't transfer more than five decibels difference between ambient noise. And what's on the other side of the boundary, then there's no mitigation that needs to be done, it's only if the. If it's at the boundary that it changes more than five decibels.
Okay, I mean, but I guess for protecting the environment from OSHA requirements for, you know, making sure certain pieces of equipment have, you know. Uh, sound barrier, soundproofing done to, you know, for the work environment and stuff like that, meeting those kind of requirements. But I think the the state regulations that I cited, right, the uh the three ten CM, CMR seven point one zero, I believe it is. You know, it does apply to like residential area, so to me that boundary would be, what is the ambient noise? At that neighborhood residential area boundary today. And knowing what that ambient noise level is. If we apply that five dB for the town bylaw to that, then. That if you put noise meters there to to measure it, the the facility shouldn't be generating anything more than a five dB above that. Previously established ambient noise, if you went with the state, you go to ten dB, but. You know, that's what I would see as an interpretation, uh, not not the one with HVACs and and maybe heavy equipment in the plant. Protecting, you know, say the uh work environment for for workers and other people around the facility.
Right, but I just wanna clarify that 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 it's at the boundary, the noise difference. So that's, eh, you know, if it's not, it's it's if it's not going beyond the boundary, then there's nothing that that. Needs to be done, it's only if it's there, the differences between one side and the other.
I think we're saying the same.
I think we're saying the same thing.
I I think we may be, I think I I guess I'm, I think we may be because I'm saying if the, if the boundary is, I don't know, let's just. Pick a number that the ambient noise level is forty-five dB at the residential area boundary. Then by the state law, that DB, that noise level can't go above fifty-five dB at the boundary. When this facility is in operation.
Right.
And if you go by the town's bylaw, then it would be, if forty-five can't be more than fifty dB. Whatever that, but again, you gotta know that, because without the ambient, you don't know what the criteria is for noise abatement if you don't know the ambient.
Right, right.
Hence the need for the study.
Yep.
Alright, so it sounds like we have that part covered, um.
So Carrie, did did someone, I was asking the question about was the, what was the timeframe for having this study done? Uh, you know, so we can get that ambient noise as soon as possible?
Yep, so it looks like it's prior to the issuance of the occupancy occupancy permit.
Okay.
So no earlier than the substantial completion of the facility and prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit.
So how would the ambient, how would we factor in any impact uh of if the study is doing ambient noise measurements while there's construction on the site going on? Uh, that could alter the uh ambient noise level adversely uh for the neighborhood. It it really should be done prior to any activity at all on the site, not just operation, but any activity in the site so that you can. Get a, you know, a pre-existing noise level in the residential area area as it is today.
So Lori, a question.
Occupancy could be afterwards.
Right, so Lori, do when we do these, is it typically, I assume not during construction, there's a, there's a defined time within the report. So we know the conditions under which it the test was done. Oops, you're on mute there if you're answering.
Yeah, so what you're trying to do is you're trying to to identify. The noise associated with the operation of the facility. So the full, the facility should be fully constructed, but there should be no construction con- currently underway. And the facility should not be operating, so it's just kind of the the construction. Uh, period is complete. And you have your baseline. So the noise that you're measuring is. You know, the equipment, uh, the operating equipment, uh, so the rooftop mechanicals. Uh, the traffic uh associated, you know, once you have the truck traffic operating, they're making deliveries. They're coupling and uncoupling. So that is what you're trying to measure is the cumulative effect of all of that noise from the operation itself.
You're saying they take it before though, before it's operational.
Correct, so it's built but not operational. And then they take it again when it's operational. So it's fully operational at that point.
Do they?
You're trying to measure the noise that is created by the operation itself.
Now, would they let the town know when they're going out to do it, the date?
Uh, they they may. I I wouldn't necessarily require that, uh, usually in the report itself, it identifies the dates. When the data was collected.
Is that, uh, let's say that the second reading is taken at fifty percent capacity, is that then weighted? Engaged for a hundred percent capacity and then calculated whether or not it will exceed because it may not at fifty. Let's say two years down the line, it's, you know, seventy-five percent, but it doesn't. It doesn't exceed it, but then at a hundred percent, it does.
Um, let me look.
I think you took my question out, so that was a good one, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, we can specify when the second reading will be taken. It could be at, you know, a hundred percent occupancy or seventy percent.
Well, I I wouldn't want it to be at a hundred percent if it's exceeding it at fifty. And I wouldn't want it to be at fifty percent if it's going to exceed it at a hundred, so I don't, it's just, I'm just curious as to whether, how they normally gauge that or if they wait it out.
Well, sometimes it's in response to a complaint.
That's what I was thinking.
So right now, it's not specified when the second reading will take place. So I would imagine. I would be when I tell them to do it, or uh, you know, there's a complaint.
Okay. Okay. Um, any other public comments at this time? Alright, so um. One thing I do, a couple of questions came up, um. One thing that stood out to me, well, first of all, getting back to the sound um dampening fence. Uh, we put language in here about the HVACs and whatever else, I don't know, it, we talked it before, we bookmarked it to come back to is like, what is that? Measurement that lets us know, and we talked about, well, inherently it can't be five. Decibels over the current ambient noise, we're hearing a suggestion from the last caller that. You know, the vehi- the exclusion for a vehicular motor vehicles doesn't necessarily mean, you know. Everything that they wanna do, Attorney Janeski, do you know anything about um state regulations on that, whether or not, what would be excluded? Based on our bylaw, is it, as long as you're a registered motor vehicle, you can just be as noisy as you want over there, you're excluded or there. Parameters, you know, for example, the coupling and decoupling is is really loud or anything like that.
And the backup papers.
And the, well, yeah, the backup paper, stuff like that.
I do not have available to explain um all the particular elements of the state. Regulation that might be in or out, if you will. But we've identified that we have a town requirement that is more stringent than the state. Which is the five decibel versus the ten decibel and. That will apply where, again, that is the stricter of the requirements. Other elements or activities that are subject to sound regulation. If they are not particularly addressed in a town bylaw or regulation, the state regulations will. Apply and those are uh in most circumstances going to be enforced and enforceable by the state.
Okay, do you have a copy of our bylaws with you by chance, I just wanna point out. The item that I'm talking about is, do you have?
I have the section seven oh five oh forty. Paragraph C in front of me.
Great, okay, so if you look at the next page or on page seven dash fifty, the question that we were concerned with was. The um exclusion, so this subsection shall not apply to the following activities, and then it mentions the registered motor vehicle. So does that exclude any sort of truck activity whatsoever, or is that just? You know, like the the caller suggested, you know, you go to inspection, you get, make sure your muffler and whatever else isn't super loud.
It does exclude registered motor vehicles, subject to the requirement that any vehicle that. Is required to have a noise suppression device does have such a device, I I. Don't know off the top of my head the extent of one. Which vehicles are required and two what the standard for the noise suppression is.
Okay, so, but if you're a truck and say, even if you hear like those door, when the doors jam shot, like you hear that loud clank or. Like, I don't know if coupling or decoupling is loud, but is that cover, if you're i- in the instance of a tractor or trailer. Is that cover, is that excluded based on this language?
I'm interpreting this language to mean that. The operations and the noise from operations by a registered motor vehicle. Provided it has any noise suppression that is a requirement of law, yeah, is exempt.
Okay.
Because the, these items are specified as exemptions, that the subsection shall not apply to these stated activities.
Okay, so. If we were to put a condition on the fence, just to make it so. That um. We just wanna make sure that any. we just want to make sure that any, any activity related to operations is not louder. We just want to make sure the sound wall actually prevents that, so does it, can we still use that five or ten decibel increase in this case here, outside of the performance standards, like as a, a separate entity, similar to we did with the HVACs and whatever, the chillers, can we add that sort of trigger in this IV bylaw that's on the screen now?
What you would be doing is imposing a condition specific to this approval based upon the particular findings that would include the location of the property, the location and use of the surrounding properties and the particulars of anticipated operation. And so if you wanted to address what is otherwise a limitation or an exclusion in the bylaw, you would want to include particular findings that support doing that.
Okay, well, I'm just suggesting, because the applicant, I think it was the applicant made a point, I think Attorney Don, he said, well, if we were to put in STC, as originally suggested, it would be, none of us are experts enough to say what that number is. But we do at least have a basis for an increase from ambient to, you know, five or ten decibels, so would that, based on our discussions and what we've talked about in general, would that be appropriate here to use that decibel change, whereas STC was just beyond sort of our understanding of how to apply that?
Yeah, and I think the only basis for doing so is that this application reflects a use that requires the approval of the planning board and there are particular circumstances that the board might find as a reason to impose something more stringent. I think that we are in an area where making that imposition would require specific findings by the board, I think you also may want to have some further exchange with the applicant, because I think we could all come up with various scenarios of noises that vehicles might make that we might not think of in five minutes, but we might think of in fifty minutes.
Okay, Attorney Donahue, do you have thoughts on this one? Just trying to figure out, if not STC, is there some sort of trigger in your mind that makes sense?
I think you're mixing two different concepts. STC, as I think the term is being used, is to talk about some specific, objective standard that I'm not familiar with in any meaningful fashion. That would, the composition of the wall, and I assume that has to do with what the wall is made of, the wall slash fence, and how thick it is in some fashion as to, particularly as it relates to sound. What, what it's getting somehow conflated with in the discussion is that somehow there's a requirement that isn't related to the operation of the facility, as that term is used when one talks about sound, that says that this application needs to exceed the standards in your bylaw. Exceed the standards that apply in Massachusetts under the DEP sound policy, in that regardless of the source of the, the sound, you can't have an increase at the property line of five dB. That's unacceptable, that's not the law, it's contrary to a bylaw in some fashion. The bylaw talks specifically about sound due to operations of the facility. And when those things have been looked at, particularly under the state regulations, that's the operation of the facility, meaning the equipment that's operating in the facility and the like, it's the chillers, it's the generators, it's saws, it's a host of type of manufacturing equipment that applies to, it's not the transient type of noise created by motor vehicles, and that's why it's excluded in your bylaw. It's excluded in the bylaw because it was excluded by state law. And if, if where we're driving to is some concept, that now the planning board on a use permitted as a right can somehow say, regardless of what happens, you can't have sound increase by five decibel at the property line, that exceeds the authority of the board.
Okay, so it sounds like you're against that. Okay, so, board thoughts on, is this okay, is this then, as we have it, is this as good as we can get at this point?
I guess that's why the hours of operation are so important. Because if the trucks are going up earlier than six to park, what if they start backing up and beeping, because now we're like saying, okay, we're allowing them to park, does that mean they're going to be moving around, like? Because like you said, it's important if they have a place to park, but they're not doing anything. So I don't know, with our hours of operation, we're trying to protect the neighborhood from all the backup beepers and all the sound. What happens if trucks start saying they're pulling up to park at three in the morning, but now they're moving around, so the beepers are going off, like what? That's not what we foresee, that's not what the applicants foresee, but what happens if that happens?
I thought it said somewhere on there that there would be no movement of vehicles on the property or of tractor trailers, I, for some reason-
No deliveries.
No what?
No delivery.
Deliveries.
Um, the, the other, I did like, the, I think we had this before and it got changed along the way, that we did originally have no deliveries to or from the property, so I think that, that piece we may want to specify, that was brought up as well, any board thoughts on that one?
Yeah, I'd, I'd agree with that, but now I'm thinking back too about this, trucks coming in, in the middle of the night. And I think Jack is absolutely right, that these guys, especially in the winter, are sleeping in their trucks, they don't turn them off. And then if you have, you know, five, six, ten trucks over there idling from three o'clock on, would create a problem.
May I, Madam Chair?
Sure.
We, we have to bring this to some level of, of logic in, in commerce. These vehicles that are arriving cannot be unloaded, they can't move around, they can't lose their load and go make more money until six AM. There's not a lot, there's no reason I can think of that a facility that's got limited docking facilities anyways, in a configuration of this nature, can expect that people are going to be queued up for three or four hours doing nothing except waiting for the chance to be able to drop their load at some point. I mean, it's, it's a different type of facility than, than I think we're trying to create this anecdote on, we're just really trying to deal with, you know, where we are, as to if a vehicle arrives early, should the, the tenant and user be in a position where they're telling them, you can't come in the driveway? I can't tell you where you should go. And, you know, suggesting that there's going to be a dozen of those people, I think it's, it's starting to stretch a little bit of, of where we are, given the facility, the nature of the facility.
I would think dispatchers, like if you have a company that's open at six AM, they wouldn't be dispatching out the trucks to arrive at three, I'm hoping, but if the tractor trailers arrive early, um, I wonder if there can be an additional comment, we had additional comments that got taken up before, that if the landscaping wasn't enough, it could come back to the board. So if tractor trailers arrive early, but if it becomes a problem when there's like backup beepers and noise associated with all these trucks arriving early, maybe there's a way to kick it back for mitigation, not mitigation as in money, but mitigation to handle the problem. I don't know, I don't know how to leave something in the condition that, okay, we want to allow the tractor truck drivers to arrive early if need be, but if it becomes a huge problem that they're moving around and they're beeping, then something has to be done.
Then so, I mean, if, if, if you're really going to concern yourself with this, I mean, we, we gotta get this closed before we gotta be standing in front of the land court judge clearly soon. You know, then say there can't be more than three vehicles and they can't be there more than ninety minutes in advance, I mean, create something arbitrary that makes you feel bad.
Well, that's what we're just trying to talk out right now.
Well, if there's any sort of complaint, then that would be up to the building inspector to enforce against. So if, if this became a problem and for whatever strange reason a, a truck decided to, to pull UEs in the parking lot at two AM, then that would go to the building inspector and he would enforce. So, of course, there's a fining mechanism, usually, I know he, he likes to start with a phone call and then if the problem isn't resolved, then it becomes a letter and then it could become a fine, so there, there already are enforcement procedures in place, should any of these conditions be abused.
But I feel like if it's not stated, if backup beepers become a problem, then it's an enforcement issue. If, say, five years from now, all of a sudden there are these trucks moving around, we have beepers going, it'll go to Bob, he'll read this HH and say, well, you said right in your condition that tractor trailer trucks can arrive early, so there's nothing I can do about that, because that's part of tractor truck, trailer trucks arriving early. I mean, I think there has to be something said, if there's an issue, this is what would happen.
But if they're not exceeding a noise element, if there's not a complaint, that we can't, you, you, I, I think we need to, to push this along, honestly. I think we can't predict every situation, and I, I know that this at some point becomes reactionary to, to where things have gotten, and I think we've done a good job of trying to really tighten this up really well. But I think it's, we got, it's been an hour on this and I feel like we gotta move it.
Right, but it will be a lifetime for the neighbors.
But Amy, don't forget you have-
We have ways to do, to, to try to address it. I mean, there's only so much that we as five people can do, and I think we've tried to do that really very diligently, but we do have to rely on the building inspector, we do have to rely on the town planner, we do have to rely on, on the police and all these other departments we have in our town that do have some say in how, how well everything goes, it's not always, it's not all on us, if something isn't, isn't as, as we'd like it to be, it really, there's a whole, there's a whole community of other departments that are, are in play here.
From someone who's tried twice.
I understand it, it's frustrating. With DPW, it, I'm not listing them out as a problem, I'm saying, but they're part of our, our resources that we have to, to try to manage these things, we do the best we can on that, you know?
Oh, I didn't say DPW is a problem.
No, no, I'm not saying they are, but I'm saying we have police, we have, we have, you know, border health, we have town planner, we have, you know, the fire inspector, we have conservation, we have DPW, we have all these departments to help us manage these things as best we can.
Okay, are we, are we happy where this is done? Is the majority of the board happy at this point where we are? Any, anything else? I can't, I can't see everybody, so you just have to let me know, are we good where we are?
I'm, I'm okay, I said that, I don't know if you heard it.
Okay, Bill, good where we are? Yep, Amy, good where we are? You guys are on mute.
You know, I think, yeah, I, I, I'm not actually good, but I think we've kind of gone maybe as far as we can on this.
I just think, as you know, if there's nothing to tie it to, then, then they don't, I don't know.
Okay. It sounds like overall, we're not going to solve for everything in this one condition, so we may just have to move, move it to, to Melly's point, I don't think we have consensus from the board on, is there any, does the board wish to continue to edit this condition or, or move it? Melly, you do not wish to continue to edit it, Bill, do you wish to continue?
No, I think it's good.
Anthony, do you wish to continue?
No.
Okay, so I think majority wise, we gotta move from that, so I think, um, is there any other items we need to can discuss or revisit or? Okay.
You know, the last thing I just want to say, and you can agree with me, but you don't have to. But I would say if the tractor trailers arrive early, they may park on site, provided in all events, such tractor trailers comply with condition two herein in, I don't know, I would say not causing excessive noise. But I just want to get it out there, and I know you don't agree, so that's fine too. I just had to say it, I just felt like if there's nothing to tie it to, then, then there's nothing to enforce if there's a lot of noise in the future.
I, I think the noise ordinance is the thing that ties it to that.
Right, but, but if it's a, it's a vehicle, it doesn't cover, it's not covered by the noise ordinance.
So I think the same issue may apply that we discussed before, like we have no, it, it's, if it's state regulation and our regulation, that it'd have to be some sort of findings that would make it reasonable for us to impose that, and I don't know that we have that to be able to back it up. I don't know.
I, I did, I did get an email from Bob Federico, apparently must be watching. And he wrote, backup alarms are a federal requirement and will not be enforced, these alarms need to sound at specific levels and cannot be lowered or shut off.
So maybe if tractor trailers arrive early, they may park on site, but shouldn't be moving around. But I guess.
Well, we are telling them to park.
Okay. As long as that's implied, as long as people, alright.
I, I don't know why they would want to move around.
Okay, there's a lot of room for them to move around.
Okay. Is there any further comments on where we stand on conditions, board members? Okay, applicant, Attorney Donahue, any comments from you?
I believe so.
Okay, Attorney Dinesky, anything from you?
I don't have anything further at this time, no.
Okay, staff, anything from you?
Nope.
Okay. All right, great, it looks like we just have one, John Wickstead, just, I think, I don't know if your hand's still up or new up, so I'm just gonna allow you to talk for a second here.
Hi, thanks very much, I realize you guys are going to move on with this one, whi, which I completely respect, you've certainly put due diligence into this. I'm just not sure why you're allowing tractor trailers to arrive early. I mean, if the rule is between ten PM and six AM, then the rule should be between ten PM and six AM. And if they arrive early, they should leave, and, you know, if they park illegally on Bartlett Street, they should get a ticket. And, you know, the rule is there to protect the residents between ten PM and six AM, and I can see them arriving at four AM. And the, the, you know, the town not being able to enforce that because we said they could arrive early. So rather than give them an out, I don't know why we just don't stay between ten PM and six AM, period, end of story, thank you very-
Thanks, Jack, I think, um, the, the major concern I, I heard from the board, or the consistent theme was just that we feared if they couldn't go there, where would they go, so would they end up in the neighborhoods, would they, you know, what would happen in that instance, so how do we at least, if, if that's gonna, if they're gonna park somewhere, how do we give them, how do we make sure it's not within the neighborhoods, which I think would be the worst case scenario, personally, but any board thoughts on that, I think that's, is that where we landed on that one?
Yeah, I, I think it's, um, a lot, again, it's not the best use of their time to be sitting and getting paid a lot of money to just sit, so it's not efficient. Ideally, it doesn't happen to the point where it creates a distraction, but I feel that, that it's, if they're going to be backing up, they're going to be backing up, and they're, I'd rather have them a onsite than offsite. Otherwise, and getting a ticket, I think, is something that, that only happens if there's somebody there at the time and a cop or a police see it and their, people get called and- And the truck leaves, I just, I'd love to think that that's a a feasible enforcement, but it's, I don't think it is.
Right.
To make it a deterrent.
Right. Okay, um, I'm gonna, Janine, your name and address, please?
Janine Callahan, can you hear me? Sorry. Um, Janine Callahan, Sixter Brook Lane. Um, I have to say, I agree with Jack, I don't know why we would allow these tractor trailers to be coming onsite, not during hours of operation. It doesn't make sense. Let them go find someplace else to go, because if you're allowing them onsite at 2:00 in the morning, that's right on top of the neighborhood. And yes, they are going to be moving around, they're gonna be backing up. And, uh, you know, like Jack said, the 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 warehouse right next door, you could have 10 of them sitting in there at 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning, because that facility is not open. So if our facility, I'm calling it ours because it's on top of Sterro Brook, is not open, well, that's just another location for these tractor trailers to come and sit. Because it's a facility that's not open, it's gotta, I think it's gotta have very strict um restrictions, no one should be on that property if the facility is not open and operating. Just my opinion, it's just, I mean, you're allowing, this is even closer than any other facility. It's right on top of the the neighborhood, and we're allowing more loopholes where trucks are gonna be able to just go and sleep and hang out there. And that's not, that's not fair, that's not fair to the residents.
Oh. So I'm so sorry, I'm the one unmuted now, telling Manny he's unmuted, good, we're a good team, Manny. You just hit, don't try star six there. Oops, there you go. Yep, you got it.
Yeah, okay, all right, now we're both unmuted. Um, Carrie, I sent you an email, but I figure I'd like to mention something. You guys uh had answered the question I had about the timing of the acoustic uh uh noise study that was gonna be done. And it was stated that it would be done uh not before the plan approval, but it would be done before occupancy. And then they could be allowances made relative to construction. I guess I have a follow up question, if we don't do the study, and all we impose is that the study be done prior to start of operations to get the ambient noise, then you need that to determine what the the criteria is gonna be for noise abatement barrier. So unless I miss something, it sounds like there'll be follow up studies done to measure noise after operations that starts. And then the question is at what level is the facility operating at? And when does the wall actually get imposed and designed and installed? I mean, because the way I understood it, it sounds like the first step of a of ambient noise won't be done until just before occupancy. And so how long is the residence gonna go before we actually get this noise abatement barrier put in?
Um, okay, so thank you for the question. Lori, in in the logic behind doing the test when we do it, it sounded like what you were saying is, uh, we do it then because af- after construction, um, it gives us our baseline. And if there are complaints, then we go back and it's up to the discretion of the building inspector to determine, is there some sort of problem, and then it needs to be mitigated somehow? Is that, is that how you described it?
Yeah, so what they're gonna do is they're gonna take the reading at the property line. And uh I would imagine, like I said, it's um either, you know, we tell them that now is the time. Um, maybe it's at 75% occupancy, so now we want you to do the follow up testing. Or if there is a complaint, so there is a thought that at an earlier stage, maybe at 50% occupancy, that they're exceeding, then uh the follow up test would be done. And so i- is that your question, or did I miss something?
Yeah, just clarifying the process, so do do are there concerns from board members on that process?
So I'm assuming the the sound wall and the berm are built.
During construction.
Yeah.
So by the time they take the baseline uh reading, the the fence will already be installed. So it will already be substantially constructed. So, you know, there might be a couple of Mickey Mouse issues here and there that the building inspector is still overseeing, but the site work is pretty much done. So the fence is in, the berm is in, the parking lot is in, the building is in, the driveway is in. So pretty much the site is fully constructed before they take the the baseline measurement. And then it's when it's operating is when they take the follow up measurement.
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay, any board questions on that one?
I think why Manny's asking is, and I didn't have a lot of time because the email came in late today. But I think like what West Pro is doing is you take the ambient sound, and then they build it, and you get the sound after construction, then they design their sound barrier based on. And I think that's why he's asking when it's being taken, because they design it according to how much sound there is.
Well, right now, we have a wooded condition. So it's not fair to take the measurements at a wooded condition. So, you know, they're going to be removing a substantial number of trees during the course of construction. So they shouldn't be penalized for having a built condition. So what you're trying to measure is you're trying to measure not the built condition, you're trying to measure the operating noise. So the noise level, the ambient level, is gonna be different on a site that's a fully constructed developed site than it is if it's a completely wooded site.
Okay. Does that clarify? Does that make sense to board members? Okay, um, are there any, what, we had a couple of comments about um the the parking on site. Um, previously, the board did not want to revisit that, did anyone change their mind about revisiting that? No. Okay.
The parking on site, well, I already have a couple times, but I won't say it again.
I I still have to wonder what, where would they go otherwise? And that's the, that's the question that I don't feel confident that the, I, well, first of all, I would hope that a logistics company would not be scheduling people to be there all night. And if they did come early and they couldn't park on the lot, I just don't know where they'd go. Then they're in, they're on Cedar Hill, they're in the neighborhoods, they're on Bartlett. I just don't know if that spreads the problem.
Well, yeah, we've seen that, we've seen where they go.
That's my big concern there.
One other thing, too, is that keep in mind that they're not allowed to idle their vehicle for more than five minutes. So temperature gets down below 50 or 40 degrees, they're not gonna wanna stay there for an hour when they're only allowed to idle their vehicle for five minutes. Get pretty cold pretty quick.
Yeah, I don't know how well that would get it here, too, it's just put in there for.
Well, it's state law.
So at least that's the enforceable component.
It's the, it's part of the unenforceable, but it's there.
What do you think, it's unenforceable, Millie?
I think, who's, I don't know who's monitoring it ultimately.
Okay. Any other comments or thoughts from board? All right, then with that, um, is there a motion to, Lori, do you have anything else that needs to be discussed or?
No, I I think uh, uh, of course, we have to finalize the findings. So whether you wanna do that in open session, or you wanna close the public hearing, I I think that's probably the next step is to talk about the findings.
Um, okay, so if we, are we able to close the hearing and take a vote? Or do we need to establish the findings before we take a vote?
If you folks are happy with the findings that I put together, then of course you can just take the vote. Uh, cuz I I provided you with a motion, which included approval of the findings and uh the conditions. Uh, if there are specific findings that you have issue with, then we can talk about those. Though, in that case, uh, we should have that discussion before you make that motion. But you can do it either in open session, or you can close the public hearing and do it in closed session. But that means uh, you know, it it's just the the planning board staff and uh town council that can participate in that discussion.
Okay, was it, is it the board's preference to close the hearing, um, number one? Or actually, number one, is it, does anybody have edits to the findings?
I have one.
Okay, do you wanna just bring that forward now and then solve that?
No, I haven't read them all closely, though, I don't know if everybody's read all the findings. This is just like a quick scan after we did all the conditions.
Okay, did everybody read the um findings and and agree with them? Or do we need to read the find, through all the findings and conditions put together? Does the board want time to read the entire package before voting?
I did, but I think, didn't we, weren't we gonna adjust one of the findings?
Amy, oh, Amy, you are referring to Amy's? Oh, okay, oh, that's right, um, Attorney Dineski, we talked about um which was the finding we were gonna edit?
Well, it's a thing card, but um.
We're gonna change something from a condition to a finding.
It had to do with the um checking beyond the limit of disturbance for condition uh E3. So it had to do with the LSP providing an opinion as to whether the potential existence and or risk of TCE and V CBOC's contamination within the proposed limit of disturbance of the project requires further research and analysis. So Amy was concerned about um what would happen beyond the the limit of disturbance. And Dave had mentioned that he could craft some language that said but pretty much the planning board recognizes that they have no jurisdiction.
So we probably shouldn't approve it until we get the finding of fact.
I I think probably, I I understand the court date is uh in a couple of weeks. So I think it'd probably be prudent to come up with that language now, so we can put this to bed.
Okay, so if that, if that, are those literally the only two we're talking about here?
Yeah, where I have highlighted, can you see?
Yep.
So I wrote, provided that the conditions stated below are imposed. Because we say that the proposed development satisfy satisfies the criteria. But I think it satisfies it once the conditions are met. Like, it doesn't satisfy it unless we have the conditions below.
Um, okay, thoughts on that?
We have it for the groundwater down here, and so we just wanted to do it for site plan.
Okay, any issues with that?
No.
Okay, um, Attorney Dineski, how how good are you on the fly coming up with that finding of fact?
If there are any other questions on findings that are there and the board members want to review, I can just take a minute or two now and um put something together with respect to that uh one issue that was identified.
Okay, would that be the board's preference then, um, to get that settled and then continue on?
Yeah, I was just curious what Lori meant by the court date.
Uh, so it's my understanding that there's a um, I, Mark, you might wanna speak to it. You you gotta provide an update to the judge.
Court has um instructed the parties to appear for a status uh as to the matter um for the beginning part of May. I don't have the date in front of me right now. Um, and I think I think all parties would benefit from having a decision that's filed with the town clerk by that date.
Okay, um, why don't we give Attorney Dineski, what what if we take a, we'll take a quick bio break to 9:15? Give Attorney D- Dineski a minute, does that be helpful, Attorney Dineski, just so we don't stare at you for the next few minutes?
Yes, that would be fine, thank you.
Okay, so why don't we take five minutes, come back at 9:15, quick bio break, grab a glass of water, whatever the case, and um come right back in five minutes at 9:15? And come right back in five minutes at nine fifteen. Okay, we have Bill, Anthony. Waiting for Millie, who says Millie? Amy. Okay, we have the board back. Attorney Dinesh, did you have? Suggestion for that last component?
I do, Madam Chair, have suggested language, and it would read as follows. During the public hearing, the board considered questions regarding testing of the property. For the presence of VOCs and TCE. Based on identification of possible release or movement of such substances. From the adjacent property on Hayes Memorial Drive. The project does not propose to disturb the areas of the property near the boundary with the Hayes Memorial Drive site. So as to suggest that construction of the project would increase the risk of such a release or movement. The board will impose a condition requiring analysis by a Massachusetts licensed site professional. Providing an opinion as to whether the potential existence and or risk of TCE. And CBOC contamination within the proposed limits of disturbance of the project. Requires further research and analysis in accordance with the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. Three ten CMR forty. Within that language, there may be some tiny edits, but that would be the substance that I would offer.
Okay, board members, does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Any other changes to findings of fact?
Do you want me to go down them? Has everybody, everybody said they had a chance to read it?
Yeah, on the break.
So I just had that one, and everybody said they were okay, or just double checking?
Everyone else good? Any other edits?
I'm good.
Okay, then with that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing?
So a second?
Second.
All in favor? Too long here. Anthony?
Hi.
Bill?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. The public hearing is closed at this time. I'd like the board to just go through the criteria for the special permit and also the criteria for the site plan before we vote. In looking at the groundwater special permit criteria. Which I just flagged here. So in our bylaws, if you are on page seven sixty-eight to follow along. We may grant the special permit provided it finds the proposed use, number one, meets the purpose and intent of this chapter. Will not derogate from the purpose of the groundwater protection overlay districts. Any comments on whether this proposal does not meet that, or based on our conditions, we feel like it meets it? Any comments? If no comments, I'll assume that the board thinks that we meet it. Well, sorry, Millie, did you have one? I missed you there.
To the best possible, yes.
Okay. So I guess it's implied with everything I'm saying, it's with the conditions that we've imposed as we found in the findings. That will not during construction or thereafter impair ambient groundwater quality or reduce existing recharge capacity beyond that allowed per this chapter? Any comments there? Okay, and then will not adversely affect the quality or the yield of an existing or potential water supply. Any comments there? Okay, moving on to the site plan criteria. So based on, I'm gonna also assume again that based on the. Conditions that we've walked through, that all of this implies that it meets the criteria with the conditions imposed. If there are any comments otherwise, I think we've discussed at length by way of our condition conversation, how. Each of those conditions fit into this criteria or related to the criteria in some way. So unless you, you're more than welcome to add something, but it, so far it seems like by way of. Discussion about conditions, we have deliberated quite a bit of this, so feel free to add, but otherwise same process. I'll assume the board agrees. Unless there are comments otherwise. So the first item is the, and we're on page seven sixteen now. The reduced clearing and grading on the site, or reduce the volume of cut and fill, the number of removed trees, length of removed or altered stone walls. Area of wetland vegetation displaced, and the extent of stormwater flow increase from the site soil erosion. Or threat of air or water pollution. And just to back up for a second. For all of these points, it's given the location type and extent of the land use proposed by the proponent. Design of building form, location, egress points, grading, and other elements of the site plan could not be reasonably altered. That said, item number one, anything there? We agree the site plan meets all applicable requirements of the bylaw. I assume that was the first one there. The site plan could not be reasonably altered to reduce the risk of groundwater contamination from onsite wastewater disposal systems. Or operation on the premises involving the use, storage, handling, or containment of hazardous substances. The site plan cannot be reasonably altered to improve pedestrian, bicycle, or vehicular safety, both on the site and egressing from it. Site plan could not be reasonably altered to improve access to each structure for fire and other emergency service equipment. Site plan cannot be altered to reduce visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage, or other outdoor service areas viewed from the public ways or premises. Residential used or zoned. Site plan could not be reasonably altered to achieve greater consistency and compatibility with the surrounding area as to the building design or scale or site design. Site plan cannot be reasonably altered. To, I'm sorry, site plan could not reasonably be altered to reduce glare from headlights, reduce light trespass from luminaries onto adjacent lots or the street. Or light overspill into the night sky. Site plan cannot be, not reasonably altered to avoid the removal or disruption of historic, traditional, or significant structures. Or architectural elements. And finally, site plan could not reasonably be altered to reduce obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. There is no variance required from the ZVA, so that does not imply, not apply. Lori, we have a different number for findings of fact and perhaps even conditions. Do you have, what is the updated number for finding of facts? Is it now one through twenty-four?
You're on mute, Lori.
Sorry, sorry, one through twenty-four for findings of fact, and the number of conditions have remained the same.
Okay.
A through MM.
Okay, great, so. With that deliberation and discussion in mind, is there a motion to grant site plan approval and groundwater protection overlay special permit? For the property located zero Bartlett Street in accordance with findings of fact, one through twenty-four, and subject to conditions A through MM?
So moved.
Second. So Millie has moved to grant site plan and approve on ground protection. The motion to grant it, is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, Bill?
Hi.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
You're on mute, Anthony.
Hi.
Millie?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. The site plan approval ground protection overlay special permits are granted, and that is a wrap. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the continued public hearing for four fifty-five Whitney Street. Site plan approval and special permit for groundwater overlay district bylaw for the proposed addition of four thousand five hundred square feet of warehouse space and associated improvements. So I will bring in, I'm gonna.
Well, they might not be there anymore. We did receive in the email from Steve Medaus.
Oh, he's here, he's reading, he's using his hand.
Oh, okay. Very good.
I'm just flipping in and out. Attorney Dinesh, did you want to also leave? You're welcome to leave, unless you want to stay, it's up to you.
If there's any question regarding the opinion that the board had asked about with respect to the residential district setback. I can address that now, but you do, you should have in writing the memorandum that I sent to Lori a few days ago.
Okay, does the board have any question? Oh, shoot, well, I should make sure they're not continuing before we embark on a discussion, so. Attorney Medaus, you're welcome to speak, hello?
Hi, he's actually not here, it's just Ben McNally here.
Oh, hi, Ben, welcome.
Thank you, how are you?
Okay, thanks. Did you have something that you want to say before we continue on here?
I mean, at this point, I figured we're just going to go for the continuance, correct?
Well, we did, the materials that we received today, at the end of the day, were not reviewed by the board yet, so.
Okay.
Yep.
So, no, I mean, I guess. The only question I have is, is there, are there any other questions that we can get to that you may have prior to? The next meeting, just so that we could get them all ironed out, if there were any?
Okay, so it sounds like you don't want to continue just yet. Do you want to have a quick discussion before we just continue on? If you have questions, we just need to have the public hearing open.
I mean, if, if you wouldn't, I mean, I, I just want to have, if, if that's what we have to do, then yes, I would just like to try to get any, anything. Any additional questions that you folks may have ironed out. I don't have any questions.
Okay, all right, why don't we just, Lori, is that okay to just hold a minute before we continue and just make sure we resolve a couple of things?
Absolutely.
Okay, so first, does anybody have questions for Attorney Dinesh, based on his letter? That verified that an abutting town does not apply, the setback does not apply when it's an abutting town. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay. Amy, did you have a question on that? It looks like you went to.
No, I was just saying, I was just thinking about his question about asking questions, like. You had so much information coming in at the end of the day. I don't want to say that I have all my questions ready, because I didn't get to in, to read all the stuff that was coming in.
Right. Are there any concerns based on previous materials that would be helpful to share, or?
I mean, I want to put it all together, so, I mean, changes could have been made.
I mean, I think, I think the only things that were really changed were, there were some questions about the lighting, and I believe there were some questions that. Fred had about the incoming water pipes, and those are the only changes. That weren't submitted prior to today.
Okay, do board member, understanding that people still need to review materials that were submitted today, are there any questions that you would want to put out there? Or? Ben, Ben to consider?
I'd rather do it next week when I have all this stuff.
Okay, so as of now, and I'm sorry, Ben, I missed your last name.
McNally.
Yeah, Attorney McNally. It sounds like as of now, there are no board questions. Lori, is there anything for, understanding also, you did not have time to review, is there anything you would want the applicant to consider at this time?
No, I, I'm looking forward to reviewing the new submissions. But I, I don't have any questions at this point.
Okay.
I have two super quick questions I could ask.
Yes.
I noticed your hours of operation online are eight thirty to five, are those the hours of operation?
That is correct.
Do you have trucks that come and go at night, or just between eight thirty and five?
We, we do not, we're not there, and our deliveries are, are between eight thirty and five.
Okay. Were there trucking bays added to the addition? I didn't, I think we're still waiting for the elevation.
There are not. We have three, we have three bays right now, and that is sufficient for our needs.
Okay, so it is like it says, it's all for. Storage, the new addition?
That's correct.
Okay.
Actually, I did have one question. So the elevation drawings that were submitted showed that the new addition was going to be, I believe, blue?
Correct.
Oh, why? Why wouldn't you just make that black?
Well, so, so our building is actually a dark blue currently, and we, we couldn't match the, the current blue. The, the current blue that we have to what we had from the building, from the, the manufacturer of the building. So we decided to go with the contrasting color so that it looked intentional and complimentary rather than. Silly being, you know, trying to match it closely. So we actually thought it was an attractive look to have the, the two-tone blue.
In my opinion, I think it would look, it would look better if the, the building is a consistent color. Whether you paint the existing building the same color as your addition. Or whether you go with, you know, just one consistent color all around. It kind of looked odd to me, but that's my opinion certainly. It's a planning board decision, not mine.
Okay, yeah, I mean, and that, that was really our thought, is that it would, it would be nice to have a two-tone as opposed to just, just one.
I just have a quick question on the site plan, there's a rumble strip as you come in the driveway. I was wondering if that was your idea, DPW or Fred's, like, what's the purpose of the rumble strip on the right side of the driveway?
So I do not know that, I'm sorry, they don't have the answer, we'll have to wait for the engineer when he is here to answer that.
I, I suspect it's a response to a comment that I made. So when I was visiting the site, it was pretty evident to me that there may be a problem. With the radius of the driveway. Because there looked to be constant truck traffic over the. Corner of the driveway, so I asked them to look at the radius to make sure that it was adequate. And then they proposed. To expand the radius with the rumble strip. So that would, any. So that would enable the truck traffic to go over. Um, but still encourage the regular traffic, uh, reg- regular vehicles to stay within the lane. So what I observed is that the slope granite curb had collapsed uh, from constant trips over, over the curb. And that the landscaping had pretty much been destroyed, so it was all mud in that area. So the rumble strip will take care of that problem by enabling the tractor trailers to, to mount um, the, uh, the curb while still having a defined edge.
Okay. I just wanted to stop the traffic from coming from that, from the rotary and force it to go the other way, like over the bridge to North Row, which doesn't support truck, truck traffic.
No, I think it'll make it easier for the truck traffic to, to make it into the facility.
Carrie, just, just to point out that the rumble, the idea behind the rumble strip is to let the driver know that he's getting close to an area where he shouldn't be driving, so it just changes the noise from the wheels to let him know that he's over near the edge, but he's not on the grass. It's kind of a warning sign. The fact that it's worn out in that spot tells me that they've been coming and going from the rotary as opposed to the other direction, which is why it's worn out.
And you're right, they do come from the rotary because they, as, as you guys mentioned, you can't go over the other bridge.
Okay, any other questions for consideration?
I have a question, but it might be for next time. Um, but maybe they know the answer now, but there's a section of snow storage. Um, and it's to the right of where the addition is, but it's close to the neighbors. I just wondered if that piling the snow there was gonna cause the water to run down into the neighborhood, because I think water runoff is a concern. Is that why that special, um, what's it called? It's not a swell. There's something being
The level spreader?
Yeah, the level spreader.
Yes, that's why, I believe that's why the level spreader is there.
Right, but there's a snow pile away from that. And I guess I was gonna ask Fred, but we don't have the new drawings. If the snow will go into the level spreader versus going down the hill to the neighbors?
I mean, I, I am not an engineer, but I do know there is a berm there, so I think that the snow would run off into the parking lot and then into the level spreader, but that is just from my knowledge of the site.
Okay, we'll probably ask it next time.
Yeah, sure, understandable.
I, I would happy to check the grading on that, Amy, but the goal is the, the, the snow not be stored on top of the infiltration area and not in an area where it could run off to the neighbor, so as Ben indicated, the ideal is that it would slowly melt and come back towards the parking lot, then through the drainage structure into the level spreader and minimize the impact going downstream.
Okay, anything else there? This is a public hearing. Any public comments at this time related to four fifty-five Whitney Street? I don't see any there. So in that case, that at least gives you some questions knocked out of the way.
I appreciate it.
Um, did you wanna continue to the May second hearing?
Yes, please.
And Lori, what do we have going on then for timing?
Just this, so right at six o'clock.
Does that work for you?
That, that works for me.
Okay, great. So then is there a motion to continue for fifty-five Whitney Street site plan approval and special permit to the May second meeting at six PM?
Same.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Bill?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Really?
Hi.
Carrie's an I. So thanks for hanging in there. We'll see you back on May second.
All right, thank you all very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay, um, the other items, getting to old business, discussion of appointment for planning board rep for town administrator screening committee. Um, so I had put myself out there as a possible candidate, but I'm always happy to if somebody else wants that role, that's okay too, so don't feel like that would have to be the case, but I'm just gonna put it out there to cut to the chase on this one. Is anyone interested in this role? Or Lori, is there anything formal we need to discuss or talk about, or?
No, they're just looking for a planning board representative, so if you could make a nomination and take a vote, then that would be great, and then I will let them know who has been chosen.
Okay, so is anyone else interested? It's okay if you are. I don't feel like
Nope.
Careful what you wish for.
Yeah. Step back from that line. I nominate Carrie Martinak for town administrator committee.
Second.
All right, all in favor, Bill? Oops, you're on mute there.
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Really?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
And Carrie's an I, okay, so I'll keep you guys informed about that. Uh, I'm sorry, I did not have the chance to read the minutes. Did the rest of the board read the minutes and wanna vote, or do we need time for them?
I did not.
Okay, so why don't we table the minutes from March seventh? Next planning board meetings, uh, May second, obviously, also the sixteenth. Next master plan, May first, and then ZBA. And May twenty-third, so no April meeting?
I did wanna make an announcement that, uh, the next, uh, community meeting for the downtown revitalization project is gonna be May eleventh, six thirty PM at the public library. Hoping to have a, a really good turnout like we did for the first meeting. Uh, so what's gonna happen at this community meeting is there's going to be a presentation of the market analysis results for the downtown. And then also, we're gonna be going over four different redevelopment scenarios. Uh, so it should be a, a really interesting meeting, looking for feedback on the various redevelopment scenarios. And, uh, the feedback that we're gonna get at this meeting is gonna be key uh, to determining the final plan, so.
Okay, so the public library, like right in that back room, that usual, when you walk in the door, like that back area?
You got it, the big one.
All right. Great. Uh, no ZBA this month, is that the case? The next one's not till May?
They canceled the meeting, uh, because of town meeting. Uh, we do have three items that are gonna be on our agenda for the end of May. So we have seventy-eight West Main Street, which is apparently an office, uh, it's, it's a historic home that's used as office space, so the proposal is to put an addition and convert it into multifamily. Um, then another application we have before us is, uh, in addition to FedEx facility. And then we just received a third today, but I haven't looked it over yet. Oh, um, that's right, it's the uh, submission of a studio, a yoga studio. So it's gonna be a vacant space, so it's, they're just gonna be occupying a vacant space. So that should be pretty easy.
Okay, great. I just had a question. Since FedEx, as a site plan, I was talking about in design review, wondering if it should come in front of the planning board for technical review? You know how we usually do a technical review before it goes to ZBA?
Certainly, I can, uh, send along all of the materials. Nobody's gotten them yet because we just received the filing, so on Friday, I believe it was. So I can certainly, I mean, if you want me to put it as a discussion item on the agenda for May second, certainly I can do that. They, of course, haven't started the public hearings, so there would be a lot of information that, uh, questions that I wouldn't necessarily be able to answer.
Okay, so in the past, Kathy always told us we had to have the applicant there if we were gonna talk about their site plan. Is that not the case?
It is a highly recommended, sure.
So I don't know if we wanna give them the option to attend, or let them, can they forego that option if they want?
Well, of course, the public hearing is before the ZBA, so they're the permitting authority. So ideally, what would happen is the planning board would go to that public hearing.
In our bylaws, I'd have to find it. I don't have it off the top of my head. But there are certain things in front of the ZBA that come to us for a technical review, and we can send comments forward to the ZBA if we have any for site plan review. But we didn't have to attend the ZBA meeting. The applicant would come to our meeting. And we'd ask a couple of questions, and then we'd have comments that we would forward.
Yeah, that's, it hasn't been my experience, uh, working for other communities. Uh, in other communities, the experience has been that they just review the written application. If they had questions, uh, or comments, they would forward to, uh, the permitting authority. Uh, but if you folks do things differently, then you just have to let me know what your expectation is.
I'm fine with reviewing the written one, but it sounded like you were saying we, it's advised we have the applicant in front of us. So if it's okay to just do the written one, is the board okay with just reviewing the written application?
I am.
Yeah.
So if that's okay and not breaking any sort of right of the applicant, then I think that should suffice.
Yeah, I mean, maybe what I'll do is I, I'll just offer it to them and just say that this will likely be a discussion item at our May second meeting. If you'd like to attend, you're welcome. If you don't, then at least I notified them that uh, you want to submit feedback, or you may want to submit feedback to uh, the ZBA. And so you'll be talking about it.
Okay. Did we have anything for our second meeting in May? Cuz I was wondering, we haven't finished design review yet. We finished design review with FedEx May eleventh. So I don't know, do we have FedEx after design review but before ZBA?
I don't, I have nothing scheduled on our second meeting in May.
Or do we do it the first meeting, so we don't have to meet the second meeting?
That, that would be a bonus. We've been working super hard these last few months.
Should we drive for that then? If we don't have anything, at this point, could we have anything on the sixteenth? With it, but deadlines have passed for public hearings.
Correct.
So theoretically, we could have no meeting on the sixteenth if we get everything done on the second. Was that the board's preference?
Yes.
Um, okay. So that would be great. And then for, just a reminder for town meeting, um, where we left it the last time, I just wanna make sure everybody has their numbers. Uh, Millie has thirty-seven through thirty-nine. Anthony has forty through forty-two. Amy has forty-three through forty-five. Bill has forty-six through forty-eight, and I have forty-nine and fifty. Is that everyone's understanding?
Yes, now.
Did you, um, did you see my email regarding, uh, Bob Federico is requesting that we pass over one of the articles? So we consider the vote.
Yeah.
Fine, he brought that forward, so that's okay with me, but I still have issues with how that's, what's happening there with that committee in general. So if, if he truly doesn't feel that way, um, I don't want him to feel like he needs to pass over that bylaw.
Well, he was concerned in hindsight, when he was thinking about it. He thought that it would be more appropriate to change the wording, so it said, "and an occupancy certificate slash certificate of inspection" instead of the wording that's proposed for the town meeting on the warrant. So we discussed whether the modification should be made on the town meeting floor. And there was concern that that may just confuse things even more. And because as a housekeeping issue, he's able to operate just fine with the current wording. And then if we have a town meeting in the fall, or, you know, if we don't, if we have to wait until next spring, he said that he would be okay with that.
Okay, so what, do you know what number that was?
Number thirty-eight.
So Millie, you'd have to make a motion to pass over it instead of the motion to, no?
So if you could make a motion to reconsider the vote on Article thirty-eight, so that would be the first motion. And then the second motion would, uh, to recommend passing over Article thirty-eight.
But why would you have to reconsider if it wasn't voted on in the first place?
Because you, you did, uh, vote to recommend in favor.
But then that would be the planning board reconsidering their vote.
Correct, so that's what you're doing.
So the planning board on
Your recommendation that you voted on at the last meeting was to, uh, approve the article, so that was your recommendation. So now what I'm asking you to do is reconsider that recommendation. So instead of your recommendation to approve, now you're gonna recommend to pass over the article.
Okay, so it's not two motions. It's a, it's one motion to reconsider and pass over.
Same move. No, just kidding.
Yeah. I've been told it has to be two separate motions, but it probably isn't fatal.
Well, Attorney Dineski is still on the line. I don't know if he's still, Attorney Dineski, are you still with us?
I am. I did not hear all of the discussion. Is this a question about motions for the board or motions that might
No, at town meeting.
At town meeting?
Yep, sorry, we caught you by surprise, um.
So, a, a motion to reconsider is a separate motion, which merely brings back the question for further discussion, so that would not be combined with something else.
Okay, so that's fine, but the planning board would actually reconsider their at-town meeting. We'd re, we'd vote to reconsider our recommendation.
No, 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 you're doing that right now.
No.
So the only thing, the only motion you're making at town meeting is a motion to pass over the article. But right now, I need you to make a motion to reconsider the vote on Article thirty-eight, which was the recommendation in favor. And make another motion to recommend passing over the article.
Yeah, I agree with that sequence.
Okay, sorry, but I completely misunderstood that. Attorney Dineski, you're welcome to leave. I didn't realize till now.
Thank you all. Good night.
Good night.
Um, okay, so is there a motion to reconsider, um, re- recommendation of approval for Article thirty-eight?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Bill?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Really?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
And Carrie's an I, okay. Been reconsidered, so now the next part is at-town meeting to pass over.
So you're, you're making a motion which is gonna be memorialized at town meeting, but you're making the motion now.
Al- also to pass over?
Yeah, you're gonna make the motion to recommend passing over Article thirty-eight.
Same move.
Okay, is there a motion to recommend passing over Article thirty-eight? Amy, the move by you?
Yep.
Seconded by Millie?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Bill?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Really?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Carrie's an I. Okay, so at town meeting, when Millie goes up for Article thirty-eight, she says
Make a motion to pass over Article thirty-eight.
Okay.
And one of us will second it.
Okay. So Millie, does that, does that sound like a, you got that planned down?
Yeah. We have to make sure we second each other at town meeting, cuz every motion we make has to be seconded, right?
Yeah, so all of the motions are currently being created by, I believe, Becca and Dave Dineski is, um, reviewing those. So what they're gonna do is they're gonna hand us the motions, so I'm gonna distribute those at town meeting. And then you're gonna initial. Um, so you don't, we don't have to worry about making the motion, so it's gonna be done for us. Uh, as far as writing them up.
Oh, yeah, but you have to actually hand them over.
Yeah, so you, you guys, when you go up there, you're going to read the motion, you're gonna initial the motion, and then you're gonna hand a piece of paper. That's the way it's been described to me.
That sounds in line with what we've always done, does it not?
Yep.
So we won't see the language until the night out.
Uh, they, I was told that Uh, they, I was told that it should be completed this week. So they're working on them right now, so they're not done yet.
Gotcha.
As soon as I get them, I'll send them out.
Thank you.
Anthony, you weren't here last time, but we also went over, um, a presentation. So you'll probably wanna re, you know, look up the presentation. We could send it out again.
Uh, I, I opened it. I have it looking, it's anywhere here.
Okay.
So I'll be making the adjustments, uh, to the presentation to reflect the passing over this article. Um, and then you just wanna check my email for, uh, the, the results of the bylaw committee. Just so that you're aware of, uh, where there may be some controversy.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I saw that Mitch Cohen had sent a message about, um, possibly not using their recommendations this year, and I know he included Becca, it looks like Bob as well, uh, Reed, I, um, just really questioning whether they're following what their powers and duties are as outlined versus, it seems like a reach what they're doing here, and, uh, like I said, if, if the cases that they'd like to articulate why it doesn't fit, then that's fine, but this isn't meant for a superset of people to have their own public opinion on zoning bylaws. I'd like to hear what their expertise is and why, why they feel that's their role.
And it's only new bylaws if we understand correctly. That they are supposed to be presenting at town meeting.
Yeah, I, I, it's just, um, I think.
Blackman bylaws usually in the past municipal, like I guess they said appropriations type of bylaws, not zoning. Not zoning.
So, anyway, we'll find out more as that goes along. Um, any other business for the board? Okay, is there a motion to close?
I make a motion to close the meeting.
I'm sorry, motion adjourned. Either way, motion adjourned. Second, okay, all in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Really?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Have a great night. Thanks, everyone.
See you next week.
Night.